All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July 21st Board of County Commissioners meeting. It's 9:01. We're called to order. We're going to start out with a moment of silence. I would just ask that folks keep in mind during the moment of silence, the Rose family. I found yesterday that Robert and Christina Rose's son passed. I believe he was in his twenties, so if you keep them in your minds. All right, if you all would join me for the pledge. Okay, we don't have any, I'm sorry, we do have minutes to approve under Item D as in Delta. May I have a motion for the May 5th meeting? All right, we have a motion to approve the May 5th meeting minutes. May I have a second? Second, Commissioner Snarting. All in favor of approving Item D as in Delta for the May 5th meeting minutes, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously, minutes approved. We don't have anything under echo for resolutions, awards, or presentations. With respect to consent, apart from F-10 and F-19, would anyone like to see something polled? All right, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion at this point to approve consent less F-10 and F-19, where we have cards. All right, a motion from Commissioner Tobias to approve consent less F-10 and F-19. I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent less F-10 and F-19 have passed. Let's go ahead. I'll take, it looks like we have three comment cards on F-10. We'll go ahead, take those, and go from there. First up, we have Diane. I'm trying to figure out how to pronounce this, and it's thrown me off. W-E-I-N-Z-I-E-R-L?
Wine's Earl.
Wine's Earl. Thank you. Welcome. And you're from Melbourne, ma'am?
Hi, I'm from Melbourne, yes.
Perfect. All right, you've got the floor.
Okay, I'd like to thank the county commissioners for the opportunity to speak to you today concerning our request to renew the lease for Wickham Park Senior Center. Wickham Park Senior Center is located on the Wickham Park property in District 4, Commissioner Smith's district. The building has been leased by Wickham Park Senior Center from the county since it was built in June of 2009. The senior center is governed by the Wickham Park Senior Center Board of Directors and is operated 100% by volunteers. The goal of the senior center is to provide programs, support, and services for people over the age of 50 years in Brevard County. Our activities are geared toward independent adults who are able to manage their own care, decision-making, and safety. Our mission is provide activities that positively enhance the total wellness of our membership. Prior to shutting down for the COVID-19 pandemic, we had approximately 1,000 members in 60 different programs or activities, including bingo, shuffleboard, billiards, multiple-card board games, exercise and fitness programs, arts and crafts, education, and travel. During 2019, we averaged more than 2,600 attendees per month at these activities. The center is open six days a week from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. In addition, we hold multiple after-hour programs during the week. Income for the center is derived from annual membership dues, our bi-weekly bingo program, as well as minimal activity attendance fees. Since our shutdown on March 16th, the Board of Directors has continued to meet monthly to conduct routine business as well as plan for a safe reopening of the center. We opened for shuffleboard, which is an outside activity, in May. We had plans to reopen the center on July 15th, but with the latest surge of COVID-19 cases in Brevard County, we had to put that reopening on hold until further notice. During this time, we've continued paying all of our ongoing monthly expenses with virtually little to no incoming. We are now asking the county commissioners to renew our lease for an additional five years, which will allow us to continue serving the senior population in Brevard County. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, we have David Slonam, also from Melbourne on the same item.
Hi, Your Honor, I'm going to waive my time. A present reserve.
Okay, well, if you'd like to use it, this is the time to use it. So it's kind of a use-it-or-lose-it situation, Mr. Slonam. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Gary McGuire, also on F-10.
I waived my time as well.
All right, that's all we have insofar as public comment for F-10. What I'd like to do is entertain a motion, let's do these separately if you don't mind, to approve the Martin Anderson Senior Center lease renewal for D-2. May I have a motion for that one? I'll go ahead and second the motion from Commissioner Smith. All in favor of approving the renewal for the Martin Anderson Senior Center in D-2, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. As far as the Wickham Park Senior Center, this is unpleasant, but I think it needs to be done. This is the only senior center in the county that I've gotten a resident complaint regarding. This was something that offset a lot of staff time and a lot of time in my office. I believe it was about six or 12 months ago regarding an alleged failure to adhere to their contractual obligations with a third party. I can tell you, based on my own knowledge, that I found the senior center, at least their leadership at the time, to have been dishonest with their dealings with staff, and accusatory with respect to how they dealt with staff. It got to the point where we had Jeff McKnight pulling VoIP records when we switched to VoIP to determine whether certain calls were made, which were not, that were alleged to have been made. I would suggest with respect to this, given that this has been problematic, without casting aspersion that's unprovable, the most prudent course of action would likely to be put it out to bid. Frankly, they may get it again, they may not, but given that there have been issues, regardless of whose fault those issues may be attributable to, I think, given the history having been problematic, the most prudent thing to do would be to put it out to bid. So if someone wants to make a motion to do that, I certainly would entertain that. Beyond that, if you'd like to hear more, I know Mary Ellen Donner is here, and she could speak to it. It's up to you. I don't really want to put her in an awkward spot, though, so it's up to my fellow commissioners.
I would like to hear Mary Ellen's last thing.
Ms. Donner, would you come up? Fun part of the morning, it just starts the right way, doesn't it?
Good morning, Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. I'm not sure if there are questions you have of me, or...
Well, I would just like to know what problems are, if it's worth referring to.
So, back in the first of the year in 2019, there was a sponsorship agreement that was entered into by the senior center and a third party, and there were some allegations that some of the sponsorship agreement terms were not adhered to. So I acted sort of as an intermediary and was able to get the attorney in question and the senior center to agree to terms, and a second sponsorship agreement was entered into, which I believe Commissioner Loebra brought it up at a meeting, but we were able to resolve that issue prior. That sponsorship agreement expired on February 28th of 2020. I'm not aware, I'm not sure that the sponsorship party ever went back to the community, the senior center, but I do know that there was a renewal made that took it to the original term, which then ended.
Thank you. I personally haven't heard any problems with these folks. If you have issues, I'd like to hear them, because my staff has not either. So I don't see, it's in my district, and I think I would have heard, so if there's something going on, I'd surely like to hear about it.
If you'd like, why don't we continue this one out? I'll see if I can get the other party to show up and provide you a first-person account as to what happened and how it was dealt with.
I seem to remember dimly when you had brought it up, what, a year ago?
Thereabouts.
Sure, I'd be happy to...
So let's, why don't we move to continue this out to whatever date you'd like, Commissioner Smith?
Next meeting.
Next meeting? When is that?
When's the next board meeting?
August 4th?
August 4th.
All right, 8/4. May I consider that a motion, Commissioner Smith? All right, I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Smith's motion to continue out this item to 8/4, and we will address it then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, that's just the one of those two, right?
Yes, just the...
So it's not the full?
Wickham Park Senior Center.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the clarification. All right, next up, we've got a card on F-19. Okay, Mr. Tobias, I don't know if you'd care to address it first, or if you want to hear the card first?
I'd rather have the card, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, Marcy Murphy from Rockledge with Career Source. Welcome.
Good morning. I just really wanted to come up in case there were any questions that needed to be addressed about this board appointment. Commissioner Tobias, I was wondering if you had anything that you wanted to address on this. I think that Frank had sent information regarding this appointment from the last meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Sir, please.
Thank you for your response. I appreciate it. However, it didn't address the root of the issue that I brought up. So with the fundamental question, this is where I'm going. With minorities disproportionately affected by unemployment in Brevard County, and your primary goal is to assist in reemployment, why is your board consistently more white than the population?
Okay, well, I'm going to address that question.
Please.
So let me, it's pretty complicated. So our board is mandated by federal law and state law and our bylaws. Forty-nine percent of our board are mandated seats, so we have no control over those. For instance, we have to have vote rehab on our board, and whether, whatever ethnicity or gender they are, they're on our board. We have the superintendent of public schools on our board. When it was Dr. Blackburn, we had, we had an African-American, but now it's Dr. Mullins, so he's on our board. So forty-nine percent of our board is made up of mandated seats. The other 51% are business seats, and that is, that is 13 seats total. Of those 13 seats, we have to ensure, we have an application, and we have to ensure that they're nominated by a local business association. This is per, we owe a Section 107(b)(2a). We have to ensure that the businesses have at least five employees. This is through our county-approved bylaws, Section B. There should be representation from all parts of the county. Two members must represent small businesses. This is CFR Title 20, Volume 14, Section 679.320. Representatives must be an owner of a company or a C-level employee. This is per, we owe a Section 107(b)(2a), CFR Title 220, Volume 14, Section 679.320. We must make sure that the organization is...
Ma'am, I think, I appreciate it, and you answered all this stuff in your email. However, 13 were choices, so I do have a couple follow-up questions, and I appreciate you citing all of that stuff, and you did a very good job in the email. My questions are, how many non-white applicants did you get for these board seats?
For the new ones, or they're not the reappointments, you're talking about the new ones?
For the, you know, reappointments, you could have gotten folks to apply for those. You just decided to go forward with the ones. So how many non-white applicants did you get?
Non-white, zero.
Okay. A follow-up, Mr. Chair, please. Did you advertise the seats in places where minority communities were likely to see it, or was this a result of phone calls to groups of insiders who just tend to be white?
We actually reached out to the chambers, the EDC, and trade organizations per law to ask them for potential board members. Also, I'm not really involved in that process. There's a committee that looks at the applications, and then it's brought before the Career Source Brevard Board of Directors for approval, and then brought here. And in fact, two of the applicants on here, two of the new members, I've never seen before. I've talked with them on the phone because of COVID, so, you know, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it sounds like no. You did not seek minority applicants. You said you reached out to the EDC, is that correct?
Well, that is one of the trade organizations, organizations we can reach out to.
Did you get a board, did you get a director? Is the director of the EDC one of the members that?
Yes, one of the mandatory members.
A mandatory member?
Yeah, she actually sits, she represents two seats, a business seat and a mandatory. We have to have the Economic Development Commission person on our board.
Okay, so someone from that organization, but she is not the mandated individual of that organization?
Correct, but it has to be a C-level employee.
Are there any other, are there any minorities in the EDC that could fill that seat, per statute, as well?
Yeah, if they're a C-level employee, like if they're a vice president, or a CFO, or COO, we can definitely, that would be okay.
Did you advertise in any publications that are geared towards people of minority backgrounds?
No, we did not.
Thank you.
All right, I'll chime in on this one. Why do I always chime in on the contentious items? I don't know why I do this to myself, but I'll tell you, I've served for the past three years, I think this is the third year, I've been on the Judicial Nominating Procedures Committee in Tallahassee. I think I'm term limited at this point, so this will be the last year I'm serving on it anyway. In any event, one of the items that's consistently brought up when they're looking at the pool of applicants to send to the governor to appoint as judges, whether it be circuit judges or county court judges, the question always comes up about diversity, and why is or isn't this particular applicant pool diverse? And I've heard so many discussions on, well, it should be representative of the population versus it should be representative of the composition of attorneys as a whole, because otherwise you'd be discriminating against other groups, perhaps Asians or Hispanics or whites or what have you. And then the other school of thought is, well, it should be representative of the applicants. I don't know that there's a perfect answer for that. I really don't. You know, in my mind, you know, first and foremost, the question that comes up when there's an issue with respect to ethnicity, is something being done maliciously one way or the other? I think there's no question there's not. And then after that, is something being done which excludes or somehow dissuades minorities from participating in the process? The answer with this is, I don't see there being anything that suggests they're being excluded or dissuaded. So really, at this point, with 49% of the seats being mandated essentially coming from a particular organization, there may not be much sway with respect to that, and I don't know. I think we need to perhaps give Career Source a little more clear direction moving forward with what we expect them to have the composition mirror. Do you want it to mirror the population as a whole? Do you want it to mirror the applicant pool, which apparently it sounds like we don't? Do you want it to mirror the composition of businesses, which may not be the same as the composition of the population at large? I don't know that there's a perfect answer, but I just, I kind of feel bad for Career Source at this point, because we're saying we want them to do something, but we don't necessarily give them a guideline in terms of what they should strive to meet. Should it be 10% African-American, and 30% white, and, you know, 15% Hispanic, and fill the rest with whatever remains? I just think we need to give them something so that they can move forward. Commissioner Tobias, and then Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And by no means do I think there was any malicious nature, nor do I think that there was a concerted effort to keep an overwhelmingly white board. But I also don't see any effort made when it comes to outreach. The questions as far as the representation, there are two measures that I think that you can look at. Either the minority representation of Brevard County, or, as Career Source does, is look to employ people, and according to the latest census numbers, African-Americans are twice as likely to be unemployed as their white counterparts. So either the population of Brevard County's minority, or those that they're serving. I think diversity is very important, and I think that we need to encourage it, and I think that we need to advertise it in those areas in which they'll reach folks. Calling up the EDC, I don't think, or calling up a chamber, I don't think, while not being malicious, I don't think it shows any effort to get a diverse population that I'd like to see on this board. So again, I would be happy with the lower of those two, which is just the population of Brevard County. I would certainly be more happy with meeting a standard of service to the individuals that participate or use that organization. But I'd be happy with the lower of the two bars. It's not met here, either of the two.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you. I think diversity is really important, too. Ms. Murphy, can I ask you a question? Do you have anybody on the board that we have influence on that's African-Americans?
Yes, actually, of the 13 business seats, two of them are held by African-American men, which equates to about 15%.
Okay. Do you have any Hispanic?
No, we had one on there. He was the general manager of Walmart Distribution. In January, he had to step off the board because he was busy.
Okay. I think if we could try to get to what's statistic with the general population, that would be good, but let's throw this out. Women are 51% of the population. How many women do you have on the board?
Are you talking about business seats, or the whole board?
Well, I actually got the number already. You have four women and 20 men.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you look at that, you're going to, you're going to have to do what you need to do. I agree with Commissioner Loebra. If you could do the best that you can with population, but you know, if we're going to get down to diversity, and I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to slam everybody around, but I just have to point out with all the diversity stuff we have going on, that women are still doing a lot of struggling here. So let me throw that out to you, but I'm fine with what you have right now, and as you get more applications in.
Yes, and I would, if you guys have anybody in your districts, any businesses that you think might qualify, please let me know, and I'll send you an application, and they can fill out. I would love to have a lot of applications, I really would.
Yeah, well, you have a lot of the chambers trying to help you and all those, so that's comforting, because we have chambers in all our districts. Maybe we should reach out to our chambers and kind of give them some direction of what we'd like them to send you. But, you know, thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for taking this punch right now in a heated time period in our world. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett.
All right, we don't have any further lights, so I don't know if someone wants to make a motion, one way or the other.
I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Smith to approve. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias and the negative. And I would just say, Ms. Murphy, with respect to future applications, I think the board, having now given you a direction, is going to be a little bit more critical if there's not some amount of diversity in there.
I get it.
And I'm not saying you should pick less qualified people by any means. I think what it comes down to is what Commissioner Tobias was suggesting with respect to outreach. There may need to be a little more outreach done within particular segments of the population. So, you know, I think we've taken off the immediate pressure by getting through the item at hand, but, you know, next go around it may not be as easy.
Definitely, I understand, I understand. Could I address the commission and thank them for the CARES Act funds, and we rolled it out yesterday?
Perfect.
I'd like to thank you guys for approving that, to help businesses in Brevard County. We rolled out the program yesterday. My staff has been working really hard. We got the contract signed with the county, we got our media approved, we're working on getting documents together. But we rolled it out yesterday, and as of 5:00 p.m. yesterday, we've had 50 business applications so far in one day, which is really, really good. We've opened it up for 10 days through July 31st, so there seems to be a need out there. So thank you very much for giving us those CARES Act funds to help Brevard County businesses.
Great to hear. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, let's see where we are here. All right, we've taken care of F-19. Another couple folks that I've asked to come out. I see Maria Stahl. Do we have Dr. McPherson here? Anyone know? We'll give it a few minutes. Is that all right, Maria?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go through at this point, public comment, and then we'll see where we're at. So I've got several cards for public comment. First up, Charles Tovey from Melbourne. Then we'll have Marcy Wolf from Melbourne, and Peter Carnasale from Melbourne. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Got my purse, and it's not a glamorous, or I didn't want to offend anybody, but I'll give you more information about my purse later on. I put on my card about my property in a lagoon. About my property, I spoke about the deputies threatening me with arrest if I stepped foot on their property while the man bulldozes my property and destroys and cuts my trees down. And I had video of that altercation, and I asked Sheriff Ivy on his day of inauguration if he wanted to witness it, and he said no. So then I came in here, and it wasn't, there wasn't language, not mine, but there was language on there that was questionable, so I was escorted out. But declaring on my property almost seven years ago, there was no prior notice. There was no notice given at all, except for me letting them know that I'd be moving out on Monday. Come Monday morning, they cleared my property, and there's nothing I could do about it, except for get shot, or tased, or arrested, baker acted, because I'm acting irrational, while they destroyed my property. But there was no notice given, not prior, not at the day, not anytime. So why was that? They wanted to rid me of my property. As far as the lagoon, I revealed that I primed the lagoon to get it flowing again, and how I do that is by increasing the volume and the calibration naturally, so it restores back to its regular flow. And the acronym FACE, I flow, agitation, circulation, exchange, and all of it's as natural as possible, as close to the natural process. And thank you, Commissioner Pritchett, for your awareness and recognition of women's rights. There's a lot of people that have been suppressed and abused in this world besides just one sect or one division. And if we could give everybody the same respect, that'd be helpful, and where am I at? Well, what to do? Ask you not to mess with my program, and I'll reveal, I'll give you details about what I do, where I do it, and why I do it. And thank you for all your respect and kindness, and my headaches are getting better. Excuse me for being irritable and grouchy, but I have headaches, and they're getting better, and there's no excuse for it, and I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. All right, next up, Ms. Wolf. From Melbourne? Marcy Wolf? Going once, going twice? Okay, and last but not least, Peter Carnasale from Melbourne. You know, sir, if you weren't here, I'd actually be worried about you. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Pete Carnasale, 1910 Independence Avenue, basically here representing Melbourne, but it also carries over into Rockledge, because the next area over is in Rockledge. Both areas are part of the Vieira, all right? We go back to IRCC in the right-hand turn lane, off eastbound Vieira Boulevard, onto Independence Avenue, into their back gate entrance. It is only a matter of time, not if, a rear-end collision will occur. Pedestrians, bicyclists, golf carts traveling the sidewalks are not visible from the road until you are on top of the right-hand turn, and they do not stop for cars, leaving the residents with a fear of hitting someone if they don't slow down. The short entryway before the gate is another reason the cars making the turn have to slow down below 10 miles per hour, and sometimes stop on Vieira Boulevard before making that turn into IRCC. As a result, basically, we're looking at cars stopping on a road that the speed limit is now 45 miles per hour. We know that people do usually five to 10 over that, and if somebody just misses the turn light, there will be a rear-end collision. Just a matter of time. The other item basically is the one that crisscrosses over. That's IRCC, Heron's Landing, and Faith Vieira Church could use a traffic light on the corner where Heron's Landing and IRCC exit onto Vieira Boulevard. There is a parallel road, Thrasher Drive, from Faith Vieira Boulevard, which goes Lutheran Church in Heron's Landing. So that connects the two, making it usable for the church as well as Heron's Landing. two, making it usable for the church as well as Heron's Landing. And basically, that's all I have for G. I have a couple of questions on H, if you want to look at those. Basically, H relates to the millage rates. I'd like to know what the new millage rate will be for the V E C D D and what the old one was.
Perfect. And we'll address it just in the order that it comes up, but you will hear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Maria, you okay for a few more minutes? Is that all right? I appreciate your patience. All right, we'll go into H, public hearings. First up is H1, petition to vacate, public utility easement, 2049 Arnold Palmer Drive, Eagle Point subdivision, plat book 52, page 37, Titusville, Weinland Family Trust, D1. May I have a motion one way or the other, Commissioner Pritchett? All right, motion to pass it by Commissioner Pritchett. Second for Commissioners Nardi, all in favor of approving item H1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, H2 is a petition to vacate a public utility and drainage easement, 843 Heron Road, Ponce, Shore's, second edition, plat book 19, page 143, Coco, Mira or Myra E. Chapman, D1. Commissioner Pritchett made a motion to approve. I'll go ahead and second the motion to pass H2. All in favor of approving H2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. H3, an ordinance rescinding selected companies economic development ad valorem tax exemption, all of which unfortunately are in D2, may have a motion to approve. Who do I give that to? I'll give you credit on that one, Commissioners Nardi. I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor of approving item H is in Hotel 3, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Okay, so we're at H4. Staff, I don't know if someone can briefly address the couple of questions that Mr. Carnesale brought up? Jill, if you would.
I have to ask Jill if she'd come down for that.
Yes, and I can't. I couldn't hear what specific millage rate that you asked about.
I asked for two basic millage rates, hard millage rate and the projected millage rate.
On the, so...
On the V E C D D.
V E C...
Which is basically, the millage rate would be the same for all of Brevard County, I would think.
So the millage rates are geographically dependent on where you live. We do have the aggregate millage rate, which that is, kind of takes an average of each taxpayer. So if you look at the current year, the current year aggregate millage rate is 5.8447. The proposed millage rate is 5.6404, so that is a decrease of 3.5%.
But you don't have it broken down, so we would know what the... Since you're saying they were done geographically, you don't have numbers for what would be covered by the Vieira East?
So there are different tax codes depending geographically where you live. So we could look at what taxing district you're in and look at which millage rates apply to that, and then look at in total what the millage rate is. But I can tell you that every millage rate has decreased.
Let's do this, just because if it's something that applies to the county as a whole, I'm happy to have it during the meeting. But if it's specific to some particular portion of the county, can you guys get together offline outside of the meeting and just get the information exchanged that you all need?
Sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you both. Okay, so that's it insofar as comment cards for that item. May I have a motion with respect to item H4? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett to approve item H's in Hotel 4. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approving H4, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, Jay's and Juliet, one. It's approval for a contract for sale and purchase from Jennifer, I'm sorry, owners Jennifer Grant, Max Brand, and Teresa Pava for a lift station FO2 reconstruction project in D2. May I have a motion to approve it? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, let's do this. I just want to, if it's all right with everyone, take five minutes, and I'll really try to keep it to five minutes. And then we'll be back and reconvene at 9:40. All right, thanks.
As you've indicated that masks do in fact reduce the transmissibility, given that one has to be infected with COVID-19 to die from it, would it then make sense to say that lowering the transmissibility would likely lower the death toll?
Yes.
So encouraging or requiring masking, whichever may be the case, could literally save people's lives?
Yes, it could.
So I want to go back a bit, if you have the data, and if you don't, that's okay, to July 1st, the day after my proposal for universal masking failed. What have you seen with respect to an increased death toll from that date, from the July 1 date?
I was going to say, that's some of what I was actually going to report out on. So I can tell you, since July 1st, our deaths have increased by 33, our cases have increased by 2,342, and the cases in our long-term care facilities, it's increased by 18 facilities. I can actually go from July 13th, which is just a week ago.
Sure.
Just a week ago, we've increased our deaths by 21, our cases by 794, and our long-term care facilities are up to 20.
What about with respect to positivity rate over either period of time?
Our lab positivity rate is variable. Since July 1st, the range has, well, actually, since July 7th, it's been from 5.3 to 11.4. So it is overall, our positivity rate is 6.22, but it varies on any given day.
Okay.
Yesterday, our labs reported out at 5.5%, which really, truly was a low point compared to what we've been having. But I don't have it right in front of me there.
Sure. Well, let me ask you another question. Do you recall the last time or the last day that we had a report come out that didn't have any COVID-19 deaths?
Yesterday. But yes, truly not. We did have deaths yesterday. So to explain a little bit how it works with the deaths, even with cases, they get reported out from the labs, but the labs then report into the state system Merlin. So that's not to say the investigation waits necessarily until it's in Merlin, because if we get a faxed lab report from anybody, we will start taking action on it. But it doesn't actually get reported out till it's in the state system. So yesterday, there were none that were verified in the state system, but I know for a fact we had deaths.
Okay. And prior to that, do you recall the last time we had a day that there was zero reported, even if there weren't?
No, it's been a little bit of a while ago. We've been having pretty consistently deaths every day, some days as high as five or six.
I think we've had several days with at least five, have we not?
Mm-hmm.
Do you recall offhand how many deaths we had over this immediate past weekend?
Well, I can tell you what's reported to us from the medical examiner's office.
Sure.
All those have not come through as labs, the labs have not come through to us yet, nor has it been reported out in Merlin yet.
Okay.
But the medical examiner's office yesterday did tell us we had 20 deaths over the weekend, and we had five yesterday. I do know out of those 20 deaths, four of them were actually Indian River County residents, so they will not show up.
So 16 then?
Yeah. But I can also say, in addition to that, is we have not seen the lab reports on that yet. So that's just a verbal report from the medical examiner's office.
I appreciate that. And I'm sorry for kind of starting it off this way, I know it's a little atypical. Is there anything else you want to let us know in terms of numbers or status?
Let me see what I have here, and we'll see what I haven't reported. So yesterday, yes, we did have 4,304 total cases, and that was up 84 yesterday. I already reported out in the lab positivity rate. Our long-term care facilities are really a concern right now. Yesterday, we had 41 long-term care facilities, again, that's out of 168, that have had cases. There's 239 residents and 174 staff that have tested positive. There are a few facilities that we're a little more concerned about, and we're working with ACHA and the state on those facilities. I've already reported out here on the deaths. I can say the median age, last time I reported to you all, the median age was running between 20 and 40. It has increased a little bit to 40 to 50, so we're seeing a slight increase in the median age. The age of our deaths are from 56 to 101. We're fortunate in this county. I mean, no death is fortunate, and I feel for all the families. But there have been children that have died in the state. So I think there's four children under the age of 18 that have died statewide. Our labs, the lag in our labs is running between five and seven days right now. I think last time I reported, it was seven to 10 days. And our testing, you know, the state goal is 2% to be tested per month. This month so far, we've tested 5%. So we're really way up there. We have tested about 11% overall. And then just to reiterate, the mitigation measures, and the number one thing is stay home if you're sick. That is the most important thing, if you're a worker or just going to the store or whatever, stay home if you're sick. If you do go out in closed public places, wear a mask, practice social distancing, good hand hygiene, and avoid the large crowds.
I appreciate it. Commissioner Tobias, do you have a light on, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wanted to avoid this, but it appears, though, that you were trying to qualify Ms. Stahl as an expert on this when it came to masks, so I do have some questions for Ms. Stahl.
Sure, please.
At our last special meeting, Commissioner Loeb said to the public, quote, "Please let the commission know if you are licensed to practice medicine in the state of Florida, or we may simply assume that you're not, and your opinion will be weighted accordingly." Also, if you are a physician, an either an MD or a DO, please let us know, so we may refer to you as a doctor. So my question, Ms. Stahl, are you a medical doctor or a doctor of osteopathic medicine licensed to practice in the state of Florida?
No, I'm not.
Okay. On March 3rd, your office held an in-person briefing in the EOC, where the room was filled to capacity, in which you explained the importance of taking basic precautions and distancing. During this meeting, the impact of the cruise industry was mentioned. Did you go on a cruise the following week?
Yes, I did.
After returning from the cruise, you were forced to isolate for about two weeks. Is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Are you aware the CDC has issued a no-sail order because, quote, "The outbreak of COVID-19 on cruise ships posed a risk for rapid spread of disease beyond the voyage and into the communities across the globe," unquote?
Yes. And the cruise I was on was the last week of sailing.
I don't know that that helps your argument. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And just, let me say one other thing. I did get approval from Tallahassee before I did go on that cruise. So I just wanted to let you know that I had the cruise planned, but two days before the cruise, I did get approval to go. So I just wanted to put that out there.
So the no-sail order didn't apply at the time that you left?
The no-sail order did not apply at that time.
And when it said that you were forced to isolate, were you legally obligated to isolate, or did you do that because that was the responsible thing?
That was the rules of the Department of Health at the time, when I came back, yes.
Okay.
And I did, and I worked.
Since March 3rd, because that was a date that was brought up, has any of the guidance either from FDOH or the CDC changed?
Since March 3rd.
March 3rd, I think that was a date that was brought up.
Yes, oh, yes. Things are changing every week, yes.
Okay. And then in terms of what your doctorate's in, what is your doctorate in?
My doctorate is in nursing practice and leadership.
Are you entitled to write prescriptions?
No.
Can you offer advice regarding matters that fall within your area of practice?
Yes.
Is there anyone within Brevard County that is consistently here that's a higher-ranked official with FDOH than you?
In Brevard County?
In Brevard County?
Not FDOH, no. We have our medical director that works alongside of me, but...
So really, you're the top dog in Brevard County?
He reports to me, yes.
I appreciate that. Anything else that we missed?
Not that I think, unless anyone else has questions.
Anything further? Commissioner Tobias, do you have anything else?
Sure, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Ms. Stahl, I'm looking at a, I'm sorry, Dr. Stahl, I'm looking at an article in which you advocated, not advocated, but spoke in favor of the AAU Junior Olympic Plan coming down.
Yes.
In your expert opinion, will bringing tens of thousands of people increase or decrease the spread of COVID in Brevard County?
It could potentially increase.
Thank you.
Along with any crowds.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let me ask you, Dr. Stahl, so if adequate measures are taken, namely, they don't have wrestling and events where social distancing is impossible, they keep people six feet plus apart, and they wear masks where appropriate, would that do anything in terms of assuasion concern that transmissibility would become a concern at that point or a problem?
What I can say, I reviewed all the plans, and I made the same comment on every single plan, and the crowd size should be less than 50. And I said that on every single plan. I can also say that each sport developed their own plan, and the plans are very good. They are cleaning with the biotech, they are, you know, wearing masks, they are screening spectators, visitors, athletes coming in. Each sport, one might have had one comment versus another, but on every single one, I did advise limiting the crowds to 50 or less.
And let me ask, with respect to what you said today and everything that's been referenced in the exchanges with Commissioner Tobias, have you ever taken a position which is contrary to FDOH or CDC stances?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I appreciate it, thank you. Commissioner Tobias, is that a new light, sir?
Thank you, just a follow-up to your question on the AAU. If precautions are taken, is the AAU taking any precautions with the participants prior to their transportation to Brevard County? Will they be testing them before they get on planes, before they get on cars?
If you don't know, don't speculate.
I was going to say, I don't know, and that's probably a question for Rusty Buchanan.
So in other words, if they were not, and it's a fair assumption, I mean, you said, and I quote, "really thought this plan through very well," according to the paper. And it's not listed here, then if we identified them as COVID-positive once, not before they came, we could have new COVID people, people with COVID in Brevard County, correct? They would not be able to participate potentially, but we would have more COVID people, people with COVID.
You potentially could with any crowd, with anybody, yes.
Okay.
With our visitors coming into our beaches and our hotels could be the same thing, absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Stahl.
Okay.
All right, I don't know if we have Dr. McPherson in? Come on down, sir. And just for the clerk's benefit, what city do you reside in, sir?
Melbourne Beach.
Melbourne Beach? All right, I've got some questions for you, if you don't mind. I appreciate your accepting my invitation to come out to speak today. So you graduated from an accredited medical school in the United States, did you not?
I did.
2020, this year marks your 30th year of having been licensed to practice medicine in the state of Florida, is that right?
That's correct.
And you're in good standing with the Board of Medicine?
Yes.
You completed a residency in emergency medicine with the University of Florida, am I right?
You are correct.
And you're board certified right now in internal medicine and a fellow of the American College of Emergency Medicine, is that correct?
It's actually, emergency medicine is a specialty, so board certified in emergency medicine.
I apologize for misspeaking, emergency medicine. Prior to being accepted into medical school at the University of Pittsburgh, which I believe is ranked in the top 15 nationally of all medical schools, you completed all the coursework at University of Pittsburgh's master program in public health, isn't that right?
That's correct.
And separately from those two programs, you also have a postgraduate master's degree from FIT, don't you?
I do, in business administration.
So, well, you've been, you're trusted to serve as the emergency medical services director for at least four beachside municipalities in Brevard County, isn't that right?
That's correct.
But you're not here speaking on their behalf, right?
I am not.
So interestingly, you're also Brevard County Fire Rescue's emergency medical services director, essentially the county's own emergency medical services director, are you not?
I am.
And obviously, you're not speaking on behalf of BCFR, correct?
I am not.
So let's get to the issues at hand, and I'll try to keep it pretty succinct. We've got, I believe, one of your handouts or your slides up here, if you want to reference it at some point. Are you familiar with any recent studies pertaining to microdropules, if I could speak English this morning, produced by the coughing of COVID-19 infected patients?
I am. There are two studies. One study is from the University of Atlantic here in Florida, it's a 2020 March study, and they looked at the distance that microdroplets could be expelled with various types of masks and no mask. And they were able to measure, on average, 12 to, eight to 12 feet with no mask, these microdropules would be expelled forward. If you had a simple ply, one-ply mask or a handkerchief, that was blunted to about three feet. If you had a two-ply homemade mask, that would stop the microdroplets from passing any farther than 15 inches. If you had a commercial, commercial-made two-ply to three-ply mask, that would allow microdropules to go maybe three inches, four inches. Now, your surgical mask and your N95 respirator will not allow any microdropules to expel past the mask.
I appreciate it, sir. Now, we've heard from a lot of folks who graduated from the Social Media School of Medicine regarding the efficacy of masks. As an American-educated and trained, board-certified, multi-decade, three-decade emergency medicine physician, who's trained as well in public health, would you please speak on the level of consensus that exists amongst the group most qualified to render expert opinion as to medical issues? And as Commissioner Tobias pointed out, you are a physician and MD, physicians, if you could speak as to the level of consensus amongst them, that masks truly help reduce coronavirus spread?
One of the things that I think we all noticed, when we were seeing broadcasts from South Korea, from Singapore, everyone wore masks. And at that point in time, we didn't think it was necessary to wear a mask in the United States, we didn't think the prevalence was that high. And there were some issues with, I think the Surgeon General stated that they may be helpful and actually cause further infections because average person's not putting the mask on right, will get a false sense of security, they don't have to social distance, and a variety of other things regarding just a sense of comfort, and therefore relaxing your hand washing and so forth. There was a about-face on that position as the prevalence of the coronavirus, COVID-19, was known to be much higher than we thought. We have very many asymptomatic and minimally symptomatic cases. So at that point in time, it was determined that a mask barrier was definitely necessary to avoid continual passage of microdroplets from person to person, especially when people didn't think that they needed a mask because they didn't feel ill. So there was a lot of, there has been a lot of what we call asymptomatic spread that has exceeded all of our expectations. This is one of the very difficult things with this virus, is that you can have a 14-day incubation period before you have symptoms, and during that period of time, you can be infected. So it's kind of breaking all the rules with the usual kind of virus protection that we are used to. Someone's sick, they put on a mask, and you stay away from them. So this is why this is very tricky, and why wearing a mask to diminish the spread of the asymptomatic patient to the rest of us is really vital to controlling the level of, or the rate of this infection. So when you wear a mask, it's not to protect, when I wear a mask, not to protect me, it's to protect you and vice versa. And we have a risk factor group that is impacted really dramatically if they do develop the COVID-19 infection. I'm 60, I have some non-insulin-dependent diabetes, and I'm very concerned. I make my son wear a mask, his friends, only two or three can come into our house, and if anyone's sick, they can't. So to me, I think this is critical for us, to wear masks, to protect ourselves, to protect our loved ones, and it's very clearly shown to stop the transmission of COVID-19.
So I want to ask you a couple of questions I didn't intend to ask you, but as Commissioner Tobias at least implicitly questioned whether a nurse practitioner is qualified to render certain medical advice. You have an MD from a very solid school, you're licensed to practice here. I'm going to ask you a couple more, if that's all right, sir?
Sure.
So you've just mentioned that transmissibility would be reduced by masks. Given that someone has to be infected with coronavirus, in this case, COVID-19, in order to die from it, by extension, would it not be fair to say that by mandating or encouraging masks, we could also prevent deaths?
That would be a correct assumption, yes.
I appreciate it. And then, you know, I'll leave it at that. I don't want to take up too much time rehashing things. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was not meaning to diminish the credentials that are clearly far more than what I have on that as a, as Ms. Stahl as a medical practitioner. I was just citing the information you did at the beginning of a meeting.
Appreciate that.
And I had absolutely no condition. I didn't know we were certifying these people as experts. But Mr. Ramsey, would you like to talk about judicial case 052016CA031577, a settlement date on, what is that, February 27, 2020, in which your insurance company or you were found liable in the amount of, it looks like $250,000? Am I reading it correctly? I'm looking at the Department of Health. John Ramsey McPherson?
Is there a specific question for him?
I'm just, there's, I have an incident date. You were qualifying him as an expert, were you not? You asked about all his credentials, correct?
I did ask about his credentials. I don't think we're in a...
And I'm just, I'm looking at the Department of Health, and it sounds like all of that stuff is correct. I just had something on here that I didn't quite understand. There was an incident date, there was a settlement date, there was an amount, and I was just curious, because that was the one thing that was not listed that you talked about. I have the license number, the beginning of practice, it all mentions, it all mentions. I'm just curious. You don't have to, I'm just, I...
Sure, no, I can absolutely help with respect to that, and I know nothing about that until you mentioned it.
Neither do I. I'm sorry, that's why I asked the question, Mr. Chair.
Right, and I mean, I like specific questions rather than these open-ended ones. Are you in good standing with the Board of Medicine?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any discipline on file with the Board of Medicine?
I do not.
That's sufficient, sir?
You'd rather not answer the question, I understand.
How many individuals do you have that are subordinate to you with respect to being subordinate to your licensed PAs and the sort?
No specific PAs. The EMTs and paramedics work under my license, and that's about 600 to 700.
Okay, so six to 700 people are under your license?
Mm-hmm.
And by extension, if one of them did something, that could result in a claim on your insurance?
Could, yes.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm starting to feel like I'm on the Perry Mason Show.
I'm sorry.
But it's not yours. Commissioner Loeb, though, are you trying to go somewhere with this, if I may find out where it is you're trying to head to?
Sure. No, I just wanted to get this in there as a courtesy, because I've asked them both to come to try to get them in and out as quickly as I could. I will bring it up in board reports, I did see that there was a speaker's card with respect to the same issue, but I did want to get these two speakers in and out, because as a courtesy, they came here. Anything that we didn't touch on that you think is important for us to know, sir?
I would just say a word of caution, and a positive, on a positive note, word of caution is we've really never had this surge stop. It's continuing to escalate. It should have stopped. This is a seasonal infection, and it's continuing to spread at a higher rate. My colleagues down in the South Miami, West Palm, medical directors, their EDs are overrun, their hospitals are dived, and I hope we don't achieve that yet here. The good news is there's about three medications. One came out yesterday from England, which can decrease by 79% the chance of dying or going on a ventilator if you're an ICU patient on the first experimental trial. We have dexamethasone now for ill patients that are having respiratory distress, it decreases their chance of having to go on a ventilator by 30% or more. And we have this convalescent plasma, which essentially is antibodies that have been extracted from blood from people that have had the coronavirus infection, and they're able to generate multiple antibodies by essentially churning T cells, causing their DNA to just produce much, many, many more antibodies. And this is in phase three trials, and these are things that are not a vaccine, but I truly believe are going to mitigate until we can get a vaccine. The very positives on the vaccine line, Oxford and AstraZeneca have had very positive third clinical trials, level three, reported yesterday with 100% antibody response to these antigens, and 100% of the patients develop T cells, which generate the antibodies. So a lot of positives out there, and we just need to mitigate, wash your hands, social distancing, and wear masks until the time we can get those vaccines out.
Commissioner Zanardi, do you have a question? Please.
Admittedly, you know, I'm not obviously Dr. McPherson, but I do hold a doctorate in nurse practice, I work in family practice. Would you, will you admit, you know, over the course of the last several months, that this virus is not just the projections, the predictions, the course of the virus, the infection rate, and everything is changing by the week?
Definitely.
The recommendations from the CDC have been changing by the week? Do you think, and do you think that the death toll they predicted in Brevard County, I think there was some experts, medical experts, as well as plenty of politicians, that said Brevard County was going to see 10,000 to 20,000 deaths within the first two months? That sort of thing?
We have 50,000, or excuse me, 50 deaths at this point in Brevard County. For wonderful reasons, we've been kind of spared compared to our neighbors in West Palm and Broward, but even in Orange County, but the infection is going to move our way, we're going to have higher and higher numbers, it's inevitable, and then we're going to have flu season on top of that. So I'm looking for a very difficult next three or four months with increasing cases, complicated by flu, which is it? So it's going to be, Brevard's not going to be spared.
And I personally think that this virus was here long before we started to get excited about it, because, I mean, I had plenty of patients, and I'm sure you have, or you've heard, even through the ER, that tested negative for flu A and B that were laying on your exam table. I've been in that situation, so I can only imagine that probably many of us have the antibodies for those already. That's sort of a sidetrack there, but... So would you recommend, I mean, if you were the decision-maker, would you recommend that Brevard County government mandate masks for all of its residents? And how would you, how would you suggest we enforce that?
Well, enforcement is, would be very difficult. I don't think law enforcement would want to be in the business of arresting people that didn't have masks, there can be fines associated. That's a real hard one to deal with, enforcement.
Would you recommend that we mandate them, then, as government? Would you recommend that we pass an ordinance that mandates masks across the county?
Well, I think a mandate without ability to enforce is, in a way, a non-starter. I think if, what does a mandate mean to you? A mandate means some sort of enforcement. Do we have that plan in mind?
So yes or no? I mean, I'm not trying to be a lawyer, I'm just saying, would you, would you recommend that we pass an ordinance? If you had the decision ability, or you had the authority to make that, to make that law, would you recommend that we pass an ordinance that mandates masks?
And you can assume that we'd be able to enforce it for purposes of that, because I think that's where your hesitation appears to come in?
I would recommend that we would encourage wearing masks in any way that we can that would enhance the protection of our citizens.
Okay. And what about a vaccine? If the government, I know that they're sort of rushing these trials, which is a little scary to me, because I'm sure you've been reading some of those trials, and they're a little scary, what's happening with some of, with some of what's going on with the vaccine. Would you, would you be okay with a government mandate on vaccination for the COVID-19? A mandated, forced vaccination?
Well, I'm a bit of a libertarian in a way. I don't think that the, a mandate for enforcing people to get a vaccine has not seemed to have worked up to this point in our history that I'm aware of.
And I agree with you, I just, I'm just asking because...
So I think that would be problematic. I think encouragement, social expectations, and good education, I think, would be...
Because that's sort of been my message to people as well, and that's how I know, I know that's how we practice, we check temperatures at the door, we all wear masks, 10, 11 hours sometimes wearing a mask. I can't tell you what that does to your skin and to your breathing, and you get headaches and everything else, which is fine if it's protecting my patients and it's protecting my coworkers. So I agree with the encouragement and stuff like that. I just was curious on your, on your position as government, because you're here speaking before government, if you would, if you were asking us to pass a mandate, and if you were asking us, you know, as more of a kind of curiosity on the vaccination thing, because I've had a lot of those kinds of questions.
Well, we're, France just mandated face masks on any public buildings. We're a nation, I think, based, we're a republic, and part of the issues with that is that we have a lot of... is that we have a lot of control of policies and procedures at the state and municipal level. So I don't know that mandating a vaccine would, it would create a lot of resentment. There's a lot of fear about vaccines. But if we hit a point where we have about 50 to 60% of the population vaccinated, we get that herd effect to where the virus diminishes and goes away. So-
And we've seen that with measles and polio. And I mean, I agree, but-
Correct. So I think you'd have, without, you know, without making it a legal requirement, which has a lot of medical legal entanglements, I think, to strongly encourage it. And I think we have a citizenry that is, right now, would welcome a vaccine rather than staying home again and not working.
But as a medical professional, does it scare you a little bit that they're trying to rush this vaccine through?
Well-
I mean, I understand why they're doing it, but does that make you nervous?
It doesn't because of the, they're still having three phases of experimenting with the vaccine to see if it affects animals and there's any side effects, if it has any obvious human side effects, and then if it has efficacy. That's phase three, if it actually achieves what you want, which is to have immunity against the COVID-19 virus from the vaccine.
But they're even saying, even the CDC has put out things, saying that the antibodies doesn't, they can't even guarantee that the antibodies protect you. So that, to me, again, the science keeps changing. The information keeps changing.
Well, I think that, I think that's a little CYA in that it generally antibody does protect you. If you're exposed to an antigen, which is a vaccine, and you develop antibodies, the antibodies will destroy the vaccine. I don't know why this virus would be any different, but everybody's hedging their vests and they're saying, I can't promise you this. It may not. But historically, antigen stimulation of antibodies, when the antigen is similar to the, to the virus, then they're effective in attacking the virus.
And I think it was even a CDC official that said, but their concern was mutation, I believe. And that was, that was sort of the concern with the antibodies.
Well, that would render-
But we should probably continue, this is, we're just more conversing at this time.
The flu mutates every year.
Right.
And so we get a different vaccine.
It's about 40% effective.
So if coronavirus mutates, they're going to have to create a different vaccine every year, which is a challenge, but it can be done. We do it with the flu.
But we're vaccinated for the flu with the prediction of what, what strain we think is, or strains we think are going to come. That's why it's only 40% effective.
Correct. We sample in the, in Asia and Australia of what variations or mutations have gone around the planet are now going to be exposed to us. And we develop a vaccine based on proteins from those viral walls. And sometimes we miss. The last time we missed is the biggest strain came from Australia. Coronavirus generally, historically, doesn't mutate that much. There are about six coronaviruses we know, three are just kind of common colds and then you have MERS and SARS. And they don't have a history of mutation like the flu does. Now, could it mutate? Yeah. But that's not its general pattern with that family of viruses.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of follow-ups with that, then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Pritchett. With respect to the estimate of 10,000 to 20,000 deaths in Brevard, I don't want to broad brush you and somehow suggest you're responsible for what other health professionals may have said. Have you at any point said we're going to have 20,000 deaths in Brevard?
No.
I didn't think so. With respect to the changing science, throughout this whole epidemic, or pardon me, throughout this whole pandemic, has anyone, any medical professional that you're aware of with either the FTOH or the CDC suggested in any way that masks aren't effective in reducing the transmissibility?
Could you repeat that?
Sure. I know that there have been different recommendations as to which groups should wear masks and what type of mask they ought to wear.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't recall there ever having been any question or suggestion from either FTOH, CDC, or otherwise suggesting that masks aren't effective in reducing the transmissibility. Do you recall anyone from any of those groups or any other prominent medical group suggesting that the masks are ineffective at reducing the transmissibility of the virus?
No.
And I apologize. I wasn't going to ask any policy questions, but since we already went there, I might as well at this point. I was going to try to keep it to the medical questions. What's going to end up coming up later on today is a discussion regarding incentivizing compliance with this at businesses. As you're likely aware, we have over $105 million that we got from the feds in the form of CARES Act funding. And what I was looking at doing was conditioning business grants from that funding upon their compliance with a masking policy in their businesses. So it would be basically saying, you're not entitled to this money. We're still going to make it available to you. But in order to be eligible for it, you need to require masks in your place of business and you need to post that prominently using, you know, our designated forms that are already available at every customer accessible location. Is that something that you think would reduce the transmissibility? And I would not have asked you this, but for the discussion that came up before?
I believe that any incentive monetary or otherwise to have businesses support masks in their, in their facilities or their enterprises, I think it's good for all of us. They can enforce mask wearing in their own enterprises. And I think really that is probably the best way to encourage, with a little bit of leverage, mask wearing in our community to mitigate for infection transmission.
I appreciate it, sir. Commissioner Pritchett?
Well, since we're already here.
You want to just, we can, we can keep the discussion moving and keep it on this one?
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have any questions for you, but thank you so much for bringing information. I think you did a real good job of giving us, I think, kind of unbiased information with some of your opinion thrown in. So I appreciate that. I don't want to get into a debate on whether not a mask works. I believe it does work. There's, there's all this stuff with that. The debate we're getting on is mandatory mask. I don't want anybody sick and I don't want anybody to die. And I love what Ms. Stahl said, that she said, if you're sick, stay home and do all these things that you need to do to risk infections. So my question would be, as we're going through this, do we need to mandate masks? And so as I'm going through this information, I'm not a doctor, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I have an ability to read information and try to interpret it. I heard someone say the other day that the data doesn't lie, but it certainly can be interpreted differently. And Commissioner Zanardi, you brought up some really good information about how this changes continually because we're discovering things or changes are made. So I don't know. It's very hard to get us on a path of where we should go other than looking at data, which, which I do. That's what I do. I run data. So I think the infection rates and the death rates do make a significant statement on this virus. And why? Because we're going to hit flu season soon and the flu kills people too. So since people won't get vaccinated for the flu season, do what they do. Are we just going to live in a mask in the United States forever? And I'm not trying to downplay the corona. It's a problem. And Ms. Stahl brought it. My biggest concern, it's in the long-term care facilities. And I had a few people throw out to me, you know, what it's your fault people are dying. And, you know, let me tell you what, then it's everybody's fault. Because just as a personal note, my dad died of one of these eight years ago in a nursing home facility. A whole bunch of people died. And as you're looking at those long-term care facilities, those people are in there pretty sick or they're waiting to transfer over and to a better life. So, you know, those are very vulnerable populations. So we have to look at other populations as well, do the things that we need to do to prevent the high-risk populations from getting things. When we went into this, and I asked Dr. Zanardi this quite often, and they were expecting some, some levels going up and down. Infections are up, infections are down. This is typical of any flu virus, correct, Dr. Zanardi? So, and when we went through this discussion, the goal was not to let the upper level, the curve, get above what you guys could manage as far as healthcare to treat people that were sick. And the crunch was flu season. You thought you'd have extra flus with this. Ergo, the president went with the 15-day to flatten the curve thing. He never thought we wouldn't have infections, but the goal was to keep it under what could be managed. So going into that, it's got me, you know, paying attention. So my first question is, as I reach out to the health community, so I called the hospitals again yesterday, got ahold of Health First. And I said, look, guys, are we overwhelmed? And they said, no, our trend's level. And they said typically the ICU is 60%. Right now it's 70%, but it's in with the fluctuation that's level for right now as far as any infection at any time at this time of year. They said the hospital's typically 60%. Same thing. They're there. They're not overwhelmed with COVID. They said their testing rate was 6.9%. They're very encouraged with the treatments they're using for the critically ill people with this. I cannot say this word, demovessor. And the plasma treatments. And they said that they're having great results with the really, really sick, high-risk people as far as them getting better. Parish, they sent me information this morning, not overwhelmed. They're at their normal capacity of what they have in the hospital. ICU, they've got one ICU bed with COVID. They have an ability to have 12 more. So they said they're pretty good too. They also stated that they think this is typical trend. Everybody's in their typical trends. And then I think about what we have going on in the community. And I've got to tell you, I know this sells papers and I know it's an emotional thing to everybody. And Lord knows, I know we're in an election season right now. My favorite meme is a little girl walked up to a doctor and says, doctor, how long is the COVID going to last? And he goes, I don't know, honey. I'm not a politician. So on these things that I'm looking at in our community, I just have to do this, Dave Berman. I'm going to call you all out. This isn't your article, though. But the Florida day had a headline that said, some Brevard hospitals are recruiting temporary nurses as COVID-19 cases spike. I read the paper. By the way, I've been buying the paper for over 40 years and I'll continue to buy it. But I was really disappointed because I went into the article and here it says, Health First says, yeah, we're hiring, but this is what we always hire. Nothing's abnormal. Parish said the same thing. Yeah, we're doing whatever we do is normal. So we have all these headlines coming out that are just terrifying. Not that this virus, I want to downplay it. It is, it's a virus. We need to pay attention to it. We need to do the right things to get this under control. But I think we're doing a lot of good things. So let me get back on the subject of mandating. Okay. So the death rates, and I think it's an important number. Before we mandated masks, because I'm going to go with the mandating, and let me get this information. The, well, first of all, the state of Florida, the death rate is 1.4% right now. We've had 2,691,000 plus some change of negative, 360,394 positive. Death rate's 1.4. New York was 7.9% death rate. Just some data. Brevard versus Orlando. In April, before Orlando mandated masks, the death rate was 8.1, 2.8%. I'm sorry, Brevard was 2.8%. Orlando was 2.45. After the mandation of masks, Brevard death rate is at 1.64. It's gone down. Orange County fell to 1.85. Not that infections have, haven't gone up, but the treatment of this infection is making great strides due to our wonderful healthcare people that are learning how to treat this. So then I went to infection rate, whether or not to mandate. The infection rates with Brevard and Orlando, since they've mandated the masks, there's really not any change in the delta. It's about the same. Again, do I think people should wear masks? Mr. Berman, if you print anything else this time, please print. Commissioner Pritchett says, please wear your mask when you're in public because you should. Now, do I enjoy the mask? No. I can't even breathe in humid situations. This Commissioner Zanardi says that, you know, we're doing this to protect other people. It's good. They are uncomfortable. They cause all kinds of problems. And I've got to tell you, when I'm wearing it, my hands are all over my face. So I am taking a risk for you, keeping you safe because I'm definitely touching my face more than I used to. So should we mandate them? Again, I don't see a significant difference right now as far as mandating. And so I start having some fun with some people sending me emails that really wanted me to mandate the mask. I sent a thing back, do you want to mandate a vaccine? Because I see the flu vaccine works because when I get the flu shot, I don't get the flu all flu season. And I got back a very strong HE double hockey sticks, no. So nobody wants to mandate a vaccine. And to be honest with you, I don't either. Is, am I going to get a vaccine when it comes out? Yeah. I'm going to get the COVID vaccine. I'm going to wear my mask. So as we're going through this thing about mandating or not, I'm going to ask you to please wear your mask in high-risk situations. But if we go down this road and then we start mandating a vaccine, I just don't want to go there. Plus, if we mandate it, I'm not going to, you know, punish people if they're out not wearing. I just can't do it. I, this commissioner just cannot do it. But I'm going to ask you to please wear your mask. And if you don't, you know, you're, you're the one taking the risk, you know? And also the people who wear these little masks with the little ventilators in it, they're blowing their bacteria out all over everybody. So, you know, we don't do it right either. But please wear your mask. And let me throw this out. If we've had all these people right now with the COVID and they said it's times 10 and most of these are the young people, we've probably had over 30,000 people in this community that have got through the COVID. I'm going to make a plea to them right now to go donate this plasma because the plasma's working. And maybe if you don't even know if you've had it, go get it. I know the antibodies aren't that good, but get the test. Maybe you could go donate some blood. Because then you can find out, maybe we can do something to get this death rate down to almost zero. And then this can fall in the same category as the flu as we move forward. And that's the place we want to go. But I would love to start hearing some good news put out in the paper and the media. Like we have, like you said, sir, we have treatments coming. They're starting to work. You know, maybe get some of the fear aspect off of this. Please be wise and be careful. But we need to get a little bit of common sense. You cannot mandate that people do the right things. You cannot mandate, mandate personal responsibility, but I'm going to make a plea that we just do it.
Couple of thoughts on that. First, with respect to the Orlando analogy, I do want to point out that when they put that mandate in place, it wasn't really a mandate because there's no enforcement. So if you really want to compare the efficacy, you need to look for a similar county, similar population density that actually has teeth in the enforcement. So I, yeah, percentages for, thanks. Percentages for-
Overall infection rates and death rates. So if you take a data source of both parts, you can get a percentage which is just, you forget.
The concern that I have is you're looking at, at a county for comparison purposes that didn't have any enforcement mechanism whatsoever and saying, because our numbers trended in the same direction. I, I don't know that that's untrue. It may well be perfectly accurate that therefore the mandate isn't effective. It may not be as effective if there's no enforcement mechanism, which I believe Dr. McPherson mentioned earlier.
Or perhaps that our communities wear a mask as responsibility as Orlando is, although we're not mandating. That's another hypothesis.
And that, that's potentially correct. There's so many variables. If you can't really get an apples-to-apples comparison, I don't know what, what good it does us. And I've heard at this point, a couple of different commissioners mentioned mandatory vaccines. I don't think anyone has suggested here or elsewhere mandating COVID vaccines. There's a huge difference in my mind between puncturing someone with a piece of steel and injecting something where they could actually have some sort of an encephalactic reaction to it, even if it's infinitesimally small in terms of the percentage that has that, where that's really designed to protect them more than protect others versus putting a piece of cloth over their face, not puncturing them, not causing them to bleed and not injecting them with a foreign substance where it's perhaps inconvenient or slightly uncomfortable. As far as not being able to mandate people do the right thing, the state mandated a long while back that we can't smoke in restaurants. They didn't do that to help the smokers out. They did that to help the population out that otherwise would be getting that secondhand smoke. I can tell you, I think that was a good thing. Is it a regulation on business? Sure. But it's a, it's a smart regulation that quite frankly will have saved lives in the long run because less people are getting all of the different carcinogens in their lungs that they aren't getting the enjoyment out of smoking to begin with. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to poke holes in everything that's being said. But, you know, my concern is we're talking mandate, mandate, mandate. I tried that route before. It didn't work. And at this point, I'm looking at an incentive-based option, not a mandate, where we say, look, I mean, as Commissioner Tavaia correctly stated before, there is no entitlement to CARES funding. If we said, you know, heck with you guys, we're sending everything back to DC, aside from making Commissioner Tavaia's day, you know, there wouldn't be a cause of action from these businesses to turn around and sue us and say, you gave our money away. It's not theirs. It's not theirs. It's simply not theirs. It's not something that they have any legal right to. If we, as a condition of giving them something that they're not entitled to, say, you have to have a mask policy, that's not a mandate. They don't have to have a mask policy. They don't have to take the money that they're not entitled to. So to me, it seems to be a way to strongly encourage compliance because there's money on the end of that without telling people they have to do one thing or another. It just seems to be the most light-handed way of at least taking a measured step toward the goal of anything I've come across. Commissioner Tavaia, you have a light, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Mr. McPherson, oh, Doc, sorry. Dr. McPherson, thank you for being here. I don't think any of us have the ability to complain about having to wait for a doctor anytime soon. So thank you for your patience. Second of all, Mr. Chair, that was the Florida Clean Air Act. That was actually- That was actually not a mandate, because it was a voter approved. So voters made that, what I would say, unwise decision. And third, and this is completely at your discretion, of course, as chair, but it seems like we have gotten, we have crossed the threshold of what may be a proposal coming out of your office with the memos that we received. And I imagine that would come later in the agenda, but since we have experts here...
Sure.
I certainly, I'd go with you either way, but if you want to bring this up again...
You want to do that?
Whatever you want. I'm just saying, we're pretty darn close to your proposal.
You're right. And we do have one public comment card, quite frankly. I don't know if it's going to be in favor of the proposal, but why don't we hear from that individual?
It's your show.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, we have, and I'm going to move, this was a comment card on Ellis and Lima 4 from Tom Unrath from Melbourne. So I want to give him his three minutes before we go any further. And why don't, just for clerk's purposes, why don't we just consider this all L4? This will be my board report. Come on down, sir. And Doc, I don't know if you have time, if you want to grab a seat, take your pick of the litter there, as long as you're six feet away from folks. Unrath? Unrath? Unrath, thank you, sir.
Tom is easier.
That'll work, Tom. All right, you've got the four, sir.
I'm Tom Unrath, 1170 Idaho Way, Melbourne. If this were, in fact, a discussion about mandating masks, I would encourage that. It isn't, but a report in the paper yesterday, day before, indicated that Georgia Tech has a program now that county by county across the United States will help people to understand just exactly how widespread is the coronavirus. Even though tests right now would indicate somewhere around 4,300 here in the county, according to what they said, it would be more like 43,000 people that don't even know they have the virus. And so it's a lot more widespread, I think, than a lot of people are giving credit for. And if you're talking about getting businesses on board with wearing masks, I think that's a very, very good thing. And if y'all were to say, "Y'all need to do this," then what you're doing, in fact, is kind of taking the onus off of them, kind of giving them some cover. And if somebody comes into a business and says, "No, I'm not going to wear a mask," the business owner can say, "Yiyar," because the commission has said that you should. And there you have it. Commissioner Smith, yesterday, I think, was in the paper saying that you can't cure stupid. And, you know, I get that. But you can cure ignorance. And so by putting out how dangerous this virus is, how widespread it is, can, again, help to cure ignorance and get people to pay a little bit more attention. Folks have said that you're taking my rights away and so on and so forth. Declaration of Independence talks about life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. You can't have liberty and a pursuit of happiness without life. And as you have said several times, we're talking about saving lives. And I think that's really what this gets down to. Having had the coronavirus myself, I can tell you that wearing a mask is nothing compared to that experience. And I would wish to prevent others from having that experience. And in today's paper, you're quoted as saying, Commissioner Loeb, "While only a small percentage of the overall population has died due to this virus, any avoidable death is one too many." And that is absolutely the case, and I would really encourage you all to put as much teeth into this as you possibly can. Thank you.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, so for the folks that aren't necessarily on board with what the proposal was that was circulated before, essentially, what I'd like to do is the CARES app, the CARES funding application that's slated to go out next week from the county could be modified so that it still goes out next week from the county with an additional self-certification box where they essentially check, saying, "We have posted a county-provided placard, and we voted on this and made them available with our strong recommendation resolution or proclamation that we did a meeting or two ago." You know, we posted a placard provided by the county mandating, indicating that masks are mandated inside this establishment. We will maintain that placard at all customer-accessible entrances until the local state of emergency subsides or until further action of the commission. That way, you have an end date in sight, and it could be a month, could be three months. Really don't know at this point. But we still have control over it. We can revisit it whenever anyone wants to revisit it. But essentially, in terms of the exceptions, you know, I don't think we need to get into whether it's someone over 75 or someone under six years old, or someone that's got an ADA issue, or someone that has, let's say, they're on supplemental oxygen. The bottom line is, we need to have something that's broad enough that the average person walking in understands they really need to be wearing a mask in those establishments. The downside is, with respect to this, and I have been opposed to criminal enforcement broadly with respect to anything mandating masks or suggesting masks, I just don't think that's the way to go about it for a variety of reasons. Even when I brought up the prior proposal, which got shot down three weeks ago or so now, I was talking about having the first violation be a warning and the subsequent violations all being a $50 fine. I think West Melbourne, and I spoke with Deputy Mayor John Dipmore yesterday, put in place a tiered fine structure where it starts with a warning and it goes all the way up to 500 bucks. And what I understand from having spoken with him yesterday, and I apologize if any of this is at all inaccurate, but I promise it conveys the gist of it, that even after they put in place a mandate at a number of their stores, over 80% of the folks that were polled by the city indicated they were happy having it in place. That's having a mandate. What we're talking about now is something that's far more hands-off. This really gives the businesses the opportunity to make the decision for themselves. And if they don't want to do it, they don't have to do it. So to me, this is the most hands-off way to accomplish it. If there is a complaint that a business is not posting it and that they receive CARES Act, and frankly, I don't think we're going to get complaints, because someone would have to know that they received CARES Act funding, they would have to go by and see that they don't have something posted, we could look into it, not having BCSO, but having county staff look into it, whether it's Ian's department or whether it's Tad's department, to take a look at it, see whether or not it's posted, and then use discretion in terms of whether to give them a warning and tell them to put it back up or immediately, which I would suggest we ought to do instead, simply tell them they're obligated to reimburse the county for the funding that we've given them, that we were never obligated to give them in the beginning. So that's essentially where I'm at, to require a self-certification for those folks that are applying for CARES Act funding on behalf of businesses. This has nothing to do with the individual direct relief, where they're saying, "We have up the placard that's provided by the county. It's already available, and we're going to maintain it until the local state of emergency subsides," or alternatively, "until we're told we don't have to maintain it by the commission. If there's a failure to adhere to that, staff would look into it." I don't think we're going to have hardly any, if any, failures to adhere. And if they didn't adhere, they're on the hook for paying back to county. That's the proposal, essentially. Commissioner Tavaia, you've got a light, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think you pulled the proverbial rabbit out of a hat on this one. You took a losing hand, and I think turned it into a very competitive one.
I hope...
I agree that the condition of emergency funding on steps being taken to alleviate that emergency is, in fact, appropriate. As you mentioned, this would represent a choice to businesses, and it is not a heavy-handed mandate, which is where my issue was. To make me a little bit more comfortable with this, I think I'd like some assurances that Mr. Berman put in the paper, so they shouldn't be surprises to anyone. There was a question of the nonprofits. Ms. Bentley mentioned that, so maybe we can get another thing in here. I'd like the nonprofits limited to 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(19)'s. Those are tax-exempt organizations, and what makes them different from the other ones? They're not allowed to employ lobbyists. So if we did this, this would keep the CARES Act out of the hands, directly or indirectly, from lobbyists. Second is important, that we express condition to be added, that no business organization has an outstanding tax in their rears. I don't want this money to go to businesses to turn around and then pay fines, whether that is, again, directly or the money is shifted around. And finally, and this is most importantly, I would ask that the motion include that the board's intent that this represents the final portion of this program. In other words, the board will not increase the funding and limit it to $10 million. While I was not in favor of this amount, if this is where it ends, it is something that I could vote affirmatively for being a given amount as well as having the mask as a condition. So I would ask for those three, and with those three, I would certainly support your proposal, Mr. Chair.
Here's what I can tell you. I think your first two are probably not going to be tremendously controversial. Your second one, if someone opposes, I can't imagine why. I agree if they, and I'll have, you know, the proposal certainly will contemplate that they can't have taxes in arrears. If you want to go a step further and say they can't have code enforcement fines that are outstanding, I'm fine with that, too.
I thought we already did that one, Mr. Chair.
Did we? Okay, all right, we did. You're right, you're right. I'm sorry. Okay, so we've already got that. Yeah, I'm fine with that. As far as nonprofits, you know, to me, that's a small step to encourage people to mask. If that's what it takes to get you on board, I'm fine with that. But the concern that I have, frankly, it doesn't matter what I think about limiting it to the 10 million, because I don't know that that's going to pass with the rest of the board. I'm happy to go either way with that, but I would want to clarify that limiting it to 10 million doesn't mean that we can't use any of the other CARES Act funding. It just means that we can't increase that pot with those existing conditions to the 10 million that was allocated. That I could live with. But again, I don't want to say yes and then alienate a majority of the board.
Mr. Chair, my 10 million would be for the pot of businesses and nonprofits listed. If Mr. Golden came back and said that the $4 million that we allocated in direct food subsistence wasn't enough, and we had a greater need as the pandemic went on, I would have no problem voting for food subsistence. I don't think it's right this money go to businesses. It's been mentioned here that we want to get the money to the people, and I think filtering it through the business is the wrong way. However, if it is capped at $10 million for businesses and nonprofits for that as a category, we can debate the other 90-plus million, or I guess what, the other outstanding 70 million later, as long as this is just taken off the table, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, let's see where they're at, because to me, I mean, the most important thing in my mind is to get a policy in place where we strongly encourage masking. You know, I'm flexible. I really don't want to limit it, but if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. Mr. Batte, and then Commissioner Pritchett. It says a Batte. Was that Fisher Smith? I'm sorry, sir. Or is it like a hyphenated last name, Smith, the Batte?
Yes, that's it.
All right, go for it, sir.
All right. I will be opposing this. I don't think it's a good idea. I think small businesses, being the backbone of our economy, they shouldn't be penalized. Leave wearing masks up to them. They're in business, businesses are all about competition. If they feel like they best serve the community by requiring masks, then they'll require masks. If they think it has no effect on their business, they won't. They're sensitive to the public. They're very sensitive to the public. If not, they don't stay in business. That's what they do. So I think penalizing businesses that need help would be big government at its worst, and I will not support this.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to start with Commissioner Loeb. I totally respect you and your passion on this, and it's what you believe, and you have my utmost respect on it. I really believe with all my heart, you're doing what's really right in your heart. And I've just got to tell you, I really respect that. On this, I, this is stimulus funds again, and the federal government isn't putting all these stipulations on that. Let me throw this out to you. If anybody in here has gotten the PPP or the small business stuff, you barely had to fill out an application, they didn't verify anything. They're trying to get the money into the community. Why? Because nobody's working. So what we need to do, because they start giving to the governments to help disperse it on places they were missing, and Commissioner Isnardi nailed this a little while ago, and she really got me thinking, we've got to get this money into the community as quick as possible, because people need it. And if they don't need it now, come October, November, we're going to be seeing a big crunch economically on this. Just watch it, knowing it's coming. If Ian needs more money, I'm in, I'm for it, or whatever we need to do. But we need to get this money out. We've got a limited period of time to get this out. With small businesses, we've got a framework ready. And Commissioner Loeb, if you want to do, like, instead of that, a $1,000 bonus to all the ones that hand out masks at their doors for everybody going in, I am in on that. I think that's a great incentive. But as far as this, if businesses want to mandate masks in their stores, you have my complete support. I'm for you. I will fight for your right to do that. So if that's what you want to do, do it. But I just don't feel like we should withhold stimulus funds, which has just been given us to get out so that the community can have some money and get our economy up and moving, because I think we're about to see a problem here soon. So I'm probably not going to support this either, except Commissioner Loeb, if you want to do a bonus amount instead to all of the businesses that will have the mask and hand them out at the door, I am in for that one, sir.
It's interesting. My thoughts, I guess, just to kind of start back chronologically here, as far as penalizing businesses, if we were hitting them with some kind of a fine, certainly it would be a penalization, but it's by definition an incentive when we're saying, "We will give you something that you're not entitled to if you comply with these criteria." We've already taken the step of putting in criteria that they have to comply with. So no more, it's no more penalizing than any of the criteria we put in place that they have to meet anyway.
I know, but the federal government gave everybody money to without, there was no penalty on it. So with, these are federal funds.
Sure.
So along the same personality of nature of that, I think that's consistent with it. But again, I really love your heart more than, you know, I do. I think you have a great heart, and I get it, because it's what you really believe. But you would win me if you want to do a little bonus for the ones that will do that as an incentive, but I don't think I can vote for the other.
If there's some way that we could figure out how to incorporate a bonus, I don't necessarily have anything in opposition to that. I think that makes some sense. I would point out, regardless of what we do, though, certainly with what's been proposed thus far, there's not going to be any delay in terms of getting it out. It's not, because I know you mentioned that you want to get it distributed as quickly as possible. I agree with that. I think that's a good goal. But I talked with Jim Lees and felt yesterday, I know he talked with Kathy Wall, and forgive me for speaking out of line if this is at all less than 100%, but my understanding is, it's an easy change for them to add a self-certification. So as far as the delay concern, I would put that to the side. I just don't know, you know, thinking off the cuff here, how we would go about implementing a $1,000 bonus to businesses that hand it out, because the problem is that the conditions federally on handing out the money require that there be certain, basically mandates which expenses are reimbursable and which are not by extension. I don't know if they hand something out, if we can therefore legally give them the money. Ms. Bentley, do you know if there's any way to do that?
They would absolutely have to meet the federal criteria. It may be that if there is a point where there's not enough money for everyone, you could weight those applications more heavily or something like that. But just a pure bonus without COVID-related expenses, that wouldn't work.
Yeah, so maybe it's something to work through in the future when we look at re-upping, if that's the way that we go.
Okay.
And I would be open to it. I just, I want to make sure that if we do it, we're not going to be on the hook to pay it back out of county funds or county general funds.
Spoken like a lawyer.
But, all right, so we've heard from the right half of the room. Commissioner Isnardi, I'm going to call on you.
And I don't like being in this position at all, but, I mean, even initially, I get your intent, but there's no way I could support this. I think that it, again, puts us in the middle of that stimulus funds, and I think Commissioner the middle of that stimulus funds, and I think Commissioner Pritchett brought that up, and I think it just adds another burden. I think people who don't want to shop places that masks aren't mandated, won't shop there, people who are worried about their health. And once again, we're in that position of trying to force people to do something that they may not be equipped to do. They're just trying to keep their doors open. So I'm not comfortable with any of this. I don't think it's our place to step in. And the bonus thing scares me even more, because that's saying, way to go, you know, for enforcing something that we think you should do, but we're not enforcing ourselves as a county. So I'm not comfortable with this at all. I think it's punishing them. And I don't, I definitely, without knowing the need of the small businesses, I definitely had no interest in capping had this item passed. So I won't be supporting it. So I don't know where we go from here.
Well, without the cap, would you be interested in supporting it?
No. I'm not comfortable with it tied to, you can get small business help only if you force your customers to wear masks. I don't like that at all. I don't think that that's our place. I mean, they're private business. That's not, it's not our goal to tell them how to run their private business. I mean, again, and I really appreciate Commissioner Pritchett's impassioned statement on masks. I mean, I wear a mask everywhere I go, but I don't think, I don't think it's our role to dictate that other people should have to. I think everybody should use their own common sense and discretion.
Oh, I agree we shouldn't.
And I think, again, we're just trying to grasp, we're trying to find something to put in place so we feel good. And I think what we should continue to do what we're doing, keep encouraging people to wear masks, encourage them to socially distance. But let's not, let's not put another thing in place that could potentially impact our economy. I just won't do it.
Well, let me, let me ask another question about impacting the economy. Since we had that measure of mine fail three weeks ago, we certainly didn't trample on businesses. We certainly were very hands-off with respect to them. We didn't require that businesses mandate their customers wear masks. What about those businesses that now have had to shut, that have had to close their doors because their employees have been getting sick? Well, we did, we did right by them. We didn't make them wear masks, but now they're closed.
But it's still, it's still that business that made that decision, that made that critical decision not to require that their employees. So shame on that business that allowed them to have close contact with the public or put in situations to get sick, or to not have a backup plan, or to, you know, we can't, we can't be held responsible for bad judgment on their business decisions. We just can't.
They certainly, I can't imagine they would have been fired had they worn masks. They were, they're adults. They can wear masks if they want. So put the onus where it belongs. The people that should or shouldn't wear them, it's up to the people.
Well, we've seen that there's a large percentage of the population that won't do the right thing. I mean, we've seen that with the numbers here spiking. So we can keep the onus with them, and the numbers are going to either stay where they're at or potentially get worse. There's certainly going to be worse than alternatives.
Maybe the stupid people will wise up and start wearing masks.
Maybe. Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. I think there's one thing we need to understand. These are private businesses, but the money they're asking for is public money. So I support private businesses to make decisions that they want, and they're welcome to not offer masks or choose to mask. And if they do that, they can continue to operate under the structure that Commissioner Loeb has said. We do this with, the federal government does this with unemployment. We just don't hand out unemployment checks. We say that, hey, you got to go look for another job if you're going to receive unemployment. It's just a condition of that. We allow you out on probation as long as you don't commit another crime. You don't have to be let out on probation. You don't have to get unemployment, but if you want to receive a public good, then you have to play by the rules. Listen, I would love, or better yet, Billy Prasad in my office would love to take his car at 150 miles down the road, but in order to use the road, he's got to obey by the limits. Now, he can go, or I can go rent a track and drive as fast as we want on a track, but just understand that these are private businesses that I greatly respect, greatly respect, that they can have the ability to do what they want. But now they're coming with their hands out. They are asking, not for your money, not for my money, but our grandkids' money. And to, for Commissioner Loeb to say, hey, listen, if you want to do that, maybe we should look, take proactive steps in order to solve what's causing this. I don't think it's unreasonable. No one is forcing, all these businesses and these charities would have the opportunity to say, you know what, as Commissioner Smith said, hey, it's in our best interest to not accept the up to $10,000 and allow masks. And if they made that decision, I may think it's the wrong decision, but I respect them, their private, their decision as a private business owner to make that decision. But it's completely false to say, hey, listen, we want to get this money out as fast as possible, yet we're going to filter it through businesses. I mean, even the federal government, even President Trump realized that, hey, the fastest way to do this is we go hand $1,200 out to everyone, or as long as you earn below, and heck, I think even Orange County did that, when they set up an online portal where people could go get money. Again, I think this is absolutely wrong, but it's false to say, hey, we want to get this money out and then filter it through businesses. It's just, those two statements aren't congruent. I'm going to support you on this, Commissioner Loeb, because, again, many times, I fight hard and lose and don't come back, and you came back more towards the middle. I greatly appreciate that, your persistence on this. And I made a promise to my sister-in-law, who keeps on telling me to mandate masks. There is a compromise here, and I didn't find it, but you did, so.
Is your sister-in-law the one that's married to the physician?
Yes.
Okay.
Who also, who also did a residency at the University of Pittsburgh, McGee Women's Hospital.
Number 14 nationally.
Yes.
All right, and this isn't something I'm asking anyone to support because it's important to me or important to yourselves. I mean, this is really something for the county here. And I, you know, I would just say Commissioner Tobias summed up, summed up my stance perfectly in that. I can't really add to it. But, I apologize. We have a couple more lights. Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, just, just real quick. In a normal universe, Commissioner Tobias, I completely agree with you. This has not been normal. Like you said, the stimulus funds, all the money coming out and floating around. So if this would have been a year ago, I think we'd have to do things differently, but we're not at that place. And again, there's so much money being printed and handed out. I have great concerns of our economy after this. The president seems confident that he's going to be able to turn it around. Maybe he will, but when we lived through the housing and banking crisis, it was a long road back. So I think we got some situations coming up soon. And in a normal universe, yes, we would do it, but I don't, I think these funds are, have a totally different personality to them. And so, Commissioner Loeb, when you're ready to vote, I'm ready.
Well, it sounds like there's not necessarily a point, Commissioner Tobias, based on where everyone's at, even to make a motion, unless you want to have everyone on the record as being in their position, which is fine by me, too.
Is my button working?
Oh, Commissioners Nardi.
Okay. I pressed it a couple times. I wasn't sure if it just was missed.
Press it again, I want to see. You're showing up now. Yep, go for it.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, this money came from the federal government, but it came to us with a packet of rules. You know, how thick, Frank, an inch thick of rules we had to abide by to use those funds. So us putting in additional rules just because we want to say you're worthy of it or you're not is not our place. So I'm not going to justify my, my vote against this anymore, I think, than I already have, because it's like beating a dead horse. But I think that, again, I think punishing small businesses, giving them additional things to do when they're just trying to keep their doors open is not a fair thing to do, and I won't support it. I'm sorry.
Well, I just, you know, the last thing I'd add to that is, if you don't think it's our place to add conditions to the federal money, then we shouldn't cap it at 50 employees. We shouldn't cap it at 10,000. Why not, why not open it up to folks with 1,000 employees that really don't need the money? And why not make it $1 million or $10 million per business? I mean, we've already put conditions in place, and if you're going to vote against it, vote against it. That's fine, but it should be for a legitimate reason, not because we don't want to put conditions on when that's exactly what we've done.
Well, we may, we may have put conditions on as far as, you know, the amount of employees, but we're not giving them additional steps that they have to go through. So, again, like I said, I wouldn't have capped it at 10 million, not because I thought businesses necessarily would need more than everybody else. Hell, I was the first commissioner that was pushing so hard to get the money out to the people that were job, without jobs and that were impacted the most. But this, this money was designed to help businesses impacted by COVID. It wasn't designed to say, you can, we're going to help you out, however, but we want to make sure that you're doing X, Y, and Z, when it's not even a law that we put in place ourselves. This commission voted not to, or I should say, this commission didn't vote to move forward with passing our own ordinance, but we're going to expect them as a private business to do it. So, again, speeding a dead horse, I could talk for another 15 straight minutes, and we could go back and forth, but it's pretty pointless at this point, unless you've got three votes. Let's get, let's move.
Right. Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Tobias, I don't think it's going to go anywhere today. I think it's pretty obvious. So unless you want to get folks on record as being in a particular position, I'm going to let it be.
I do want to go on the record and say thank you very much for attempting to find a common middle ground. I think you did a very good job. Clearly, a lot of work came out of your office on this, and I hope this doesn't get worse. I pray this, this doesn't get worse. But maybe, if it does, instead of jumping directly to a mandate, maybe, maybe we could start here and see where, see where it goes. Again, thank you for taking the time and the effort to put this in. I'm sorry it didn't move forward.
I appreciate your flexibility as well. You know, frankly, the first couple ideas you had, even though I wasn't thrilled with the third, they're good ideas. So, you know, your input certainly is appreciated. All right, we'll move on from there. Jay two, I believe we left at. Peter, I'm sorry. Do you want me to kind of give them just the teaser in terms of where I'm at with it? So I don't know what he's going to recommend at the end, or if he's just going to give us a bunch of options, but at the end of the day, I'm going to suggest that we leave 1 and 1/4 million available so that they can redo the walkways in the restrooms in Lori Wilson. They really need it. The remainder of it, given the financial circumstances, you know, if it has to be taken off the table for now, I'm not thrilled with it, but I think we all need to play ball with our individual districts. This is one in my district. I don't like it, but I think the rest of it can wait. I don't think the walkways can. We had someone get injured in the recent past because their foot went through the walkway. That's going to happen again if we don't do something, or alternatively, we'll just keep blocking off the walkways, which I think is bad, too. And the restrooms, obviously, those are the two things. I think 1 and 1/4 million, given the size of the park and its humongous, and the lengths and widths of the walkways, that would probably do it. Peter?
Yes, sir. The only other thing is we need, for the RFQ that was issued last year, we just need the board to reject that, since that's sort of out of date now. So if the board does accept your proposal for the 1 and 1/4 million to be used for repairs, that won't require us to do another RFQ, because we have contracts in place that we can use to accomplish that.
Okay, so before we get too much further, and I don't believe, no, we don't have any speaker cards on this, let's, let's address the first item of business. Can I have a motion to reject all of the bids that came in?
No.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Tobias. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor rejecting all the bids that came in? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, and I see a couple new lights from Commissioners Tobias and Pritchett. Are those new ones? All right, perfect. Peter, if you want to continue with the rest of it in terms of the repairs, just to bring them on, onboard, and if you don't want to hear it, I'll, you know, I'll save him the time as well, but otherwise, if you want to start up.
Sure. Yeah, I think the bottom line of this is the TDC was recommending sort of holding on spending due to the reduction of TDT tax collection. So that being said, as you mentioned, there are definitely repairs that need to be made. Of course, we also need to maintain the park. So there are some expenditures, but they're, they're recommending we hold on the $5 million project, which was a bigger refurbishment project of the park, and they're also recommending holding on any IRL grants for next year, which typically we would have $1 million in the budget for that. But again, with our reduction in expenses, they're, they're trying to be prudent and make sure that we're able to adhere to the contract that we have with the Army Corps. So that's, that's what's driving that.
And my, my thought on that, too, if it's all right, Commissioners, just with, with respect to the other, let's, if you don't mind, kind of bifurcate this and deal with Lori Wilson on one hand and the IRL on the other, because I have a different position with respect to those two, and I may well be on the same page with you on one and not the other. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we're going to bifurcate, which one are we going to start with? Lori Wis-
Your pick.
Okay, I'll start with the Lori Wilson one. Commissioner Pritchett said that this budget is going to be tight, not this one, but the following one. And we have to make priorities, and we have to make that apparent in our budget. And there are some opportunities, I think, where we can make some cuts without decreasing services. And I think parks is somewhere. It's something my office, as well as the Parks Director, under direction, under our direction, has been looking at. Palm Bay a little while ago, sorry, the county had some parks wholly within Palm Bay, and Palm Bay decided that it was in their best interest to manage the parks that were within the jurisdiction of Palm Bay. There are a number of parks that are wholly within the jurisdiction of a city. Now, there are some other issues when it comes to parks MSTUs, but this is why it's not as simple of an issue. But there are interlocal agreements that can be entered into where, by we turn over these county parks over to the city, no loss, and the cities can make a determination as to move forward. So I'm going to support you in this one, because I like to see that this was, I love throwing his name out there. This was a Commissioner Barfield idea that I thought was pretty poor to begin with, but the more I wrap my head around it, I wish it was expanded. I wish we could take TDC dollars, and I wish there were more of them, and use the parks that are within the county. There are a number of beach parks in my district, the south end of the county, that meet the definition, so we could use TDC dollars. If there were more TDC dollars, this is a way that we could keep levels of service at where they are while reducing, reducing general fund. So what I'm saying here is something will be coming out of my office in the short term as to look at the possibilities based on current interlocal agreements, as well as whether the cities even want, hopefully, these parks. But I, I'm going to support you here, but I would ask that you keep an open mind as we move forward to take some of county parks that are fully encumbered within a city, and looking at whether or not the city should have the responsibility to take care of those instead of us.
I'm good with that. I can tell you, I've spoken with the mayor and the city manager out there specifically about transferring this park. One of the concerns, and you may want to talk to some of your constituents to determine what their thoughts are on it, that comes up is what the cities are going to do with respect to parking and how they intend to monetize that. Because turning over a county asset that's prime real estate, even if it's being maintained as a park, even if we have an obligation to maintain it as a park, I have a little bit of unease taking something that's totally accessible where people can freely park there, handing it over to a city, and the city saying, well, why should we take it if we can't monetize it? So it's, it's something to consider. I'm not saying that there aren't circumstances under which parking should be charged for, but if that is something that happens with this park or another park, I would like to see the money they make from monetizing the park and go right back into that park as opposed to being a cash cow for the city.
And I think, Mr. Chair, you bring up the exact same issues that I have with CRAs. Cocoa Beach used CRA money, 45% or better, that was from countywide, from county taxpayers, built a garage, and now is using that as a cash cow. So in effect, these people are not only paying for the garage, they're then paying to park. So I completely understand that. That is something that, with an interlocal agreement, we could make sure that it's a park, and if the city decided to go in the direction of monetize parking, that, that it would be used to maintain or even better that park. So I agree, those are things that could be definitely hashed out.
I'll keep an open mind, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. I was going to kind of ask the same thing, because what we're in right now with unsure economic future, that I thought we should kind of put a hold on things to figure it out. And I agree also that I think we need to do repairs in Lori Wilson Park because it's a county park, and it does have some need issues. So I think, you know, up to the amount that Commissioner Loeb said, whatever it takes to get those repairs done and to make it safe, it would be good. As far as turning that one over, from what we just learned with, with the ability of keeping some parks opened or closed, I'm not real sure that I'm going to agree to relinquishing Lori Wilson Park at this, any time of my sitting up here, unless something really happens that changes my mind. So I think it became a very important park over a period of time. So Commissioner Loeb, I'm going to be in agreement with you on this. I think it's a wise move right now, because we don't know what we have ahead of us.
All right, Commissioner Tobias, in that case, I'll kind of pick you out as the victim here. Would you mind making a motion to make available 1.25 million from the TDT to perform repairs in Lori Wilson, up to 1.25 million from the TDT, and then we'll reduce the amount that was allocated from five, by an amount of 3.75 million to that 1.25 million at this point?
No.
All right, I'll go ahead and second that motion. Does that contemplate everything you need?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Now, here's the one I'm, I'm real skittish about, the IRL grants. And I know that Peter put in, I think it was the agenda report, lest we discussed it. We've got a couple different options. We can cut it to nothing for a year. We can cut it in half. We can do whatever else we want with it. We can leave it where it is. I really don't like cutting it. I can tell you right now, I'm not going to support cutting it to zero, even if it is a lean year. I think it's important enough that we need to keep something going there. I don't, I don't want to set a precedent where we're just hammering that as the first go-to. Commissioner Pritchett?
Is it possible that we just kind of put it on hold for six months, and we have this discussion again in six months as far as grants? I think that would be some wisdom.
We could do that.
I'm happier with that, to be quite honest. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. My understanding is we're trying to decrease expenditures, so we have the ability for the matching grants for the Dune Repair. Was that-
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we were to put a moratorium on doing anything or to keep the spending, where would you make cuts? Because obviously, you can't create more tourists in this. Where would you make cuts? And so we can have that matching that helped me here is, what, seven or eight or nine to one? I mean, it's a huge, huge return.
Yeah, it usually comes out to about nine to one. I think, you know, in that fund- I think, you know, in that fund, we have carryforward funds, so we're okay for right now. We just did a big project in the mid-reach and the south reach, so we don't think Army Corps will be coming back for any major expenditures in the next 12 months. Obviously, when we look at the 50-year plan, we've got to have funds in the future, and if we keep spending at the current level, we would not have that. But for one year, I think we're okay. If we hold for six months, or, you know, have another discussion, we can see where we are.
And in the off chance, they did come back in 12 months. I assume you'd be lobbying for it, especially if there's a nine-to-one match. Where would those funds come from?
Again, we have some carryforward funds.
Enough to cover that?
We would, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I don't know that we need a motion for that, unless there's something you'd like us to have in the form of a motion?
For a delay of six months, yes, sir. That would be helpful.
All right. Can I have a motion to? We'll continue it out for six months.
To continue it out for six months.
And then we'll let Mr. Grantis figure out which meeting he wants to put it on, roughly around the six-month mark. Fair enough? All right. I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Pritchett's motion to kick this out for six months. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now we get into the interesting stuff, huh? All right. J3, Commissioner Tabia, it's your show.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request, permission to advertise, an ordinance, one that I mentioned last week. I threw out some options, and there seemed to be some general support, so I limited this, so we would have the opportunity to advertise. I wanted to, before we got into this, discuss some of the very good points that some of my fellow commissioners made, some, in fact, that I did not have good answers for. So the first one brought up was the difference between an offender and a predator. This section of the ordinance we're talking about amends Section 74-102B, already expressly applies to both offenders and predators, and for good reason. According to FDLE, there are 771 sexual offenders released in Brevard County, 96 predators, for a grand total of 867. Some examples of crimes which would require registration as an offender, but not a predator: transmission of child porn, under Florida Statute 847.0137; knowingly selling obscene material to a minor, Florida Statute 847.0133; transmission of obscene material to a minor, 847.0138; sexual misconduct when the victim is in a facility for the disabled, 893.135. We brought, Commissioner Smith mentioned something about an age, and this is something the legislature has dealt with on a number of occasions. I just didn't have the specifics. It's Romeo and Juliet, and what that did under Section 943.04354 creates a system for which people who were convicted in these scenarios to be removed from the registry. In fact, an offender who has sexual relations, 18 years old, with a 14-year-old can be removed from the registry, because there was a four-year age difference. As such, the individuals that Commissioner Smith mentioned, the 18-year-old and the one that was a girlfriend that was a few weeks shy of 16, and they later got engaged, would be able to be removed from the registry. Thus, this would not impact them. So what is the proposal? Basically, this would allow businesses to close the loophole that currently exists in our code, because now it only applies to publicly-owned parks. This would create a voluntary registry for businesses. The businesses would be required to certify that it is a place where children regularly congregate, and the primary purpose of its business is recreation. These requirements are based on state statute definition of parks and its sexual offender definitions. Some examples, and I just looked online, might be Andretti Thrill Park, Chuck E. Cheese, if it makes it through this, Urban Air Trampoline and Adventure Park, or Sky Zone. The registration would be valid for one year. Based on the experience with creating a registry for animal abusers, the cost would be minimal. The ordinance would not place any liability on the business to enforce. The penalty for violation would be the same that currently exists for public parks, Section 74-103. Up to $500 fine, 60 days in jail. More importantly, if the violator represents a violation of conditional use, this offense may be used for reincarceration. I would like to thank Sheriff Ivey for working with me and supporting the concept as we move forward. Now, this fully has not been vetted. There are some issues that I think can be worked out, but that's what the purpose of advertising. So I'm more than willing to answer any questions, but I'm also like to make a motion when it's all done for legislative intent and permission to advertise the ordinance, as indicated in the agenda report, Mr. Chair.
All right. First, we'll hear from Commissioners Smith and Pritchett, then I'll jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one quick question for Commissioner Tabia. Is there or was there a particular instance that occurred, causing you to instigate this measure?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Yes. I have a, I don't, not a constituent in my district, but a constituent in Commissioner Pritchett's district, sorry, who constantly contacts my office, that Brevard County is too strict on sexual offenders. Brevard County goes above and beyond what the limits of the state are, and he thought that that was too harsh. So I took some time and looked at some of his complaints, and saw that they were absolutely incorrect. In fact, I think the, I think that the regulations in Brevard County are far too lenient. The fact that an offender or a sexual predator can hang right outside a business that caters to kids, but is legally prohibited from hanging out from a park, is just a loophole that we didn't see, and one that we have the opportunity to fix. So as much as this individual probably wouldn't like to, and I invited him here, to know that his intent was to make things more lenient, I went in the other direction. Mr. Smith, Commissioners?
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm good with it, Commissioner Tabia. We did the same thing with the animals. I have a request. You put this in here, and it jumped out at me. The county's definition of park is a publicly-owned or operated area used for public use of recreation facility. I would like to go ahead and change our ordinance to say what the state does. Park, all public and private property, design and designate it, being used for recreational purposes, and where children regularly congregate. So you put this in there, so I like what you have, and I would also like to maybe move forward, make the change in our ordinance to have the same definition for park as the state of Florida does.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I went in that direction, but I would advise that, initially, that you speak with Ms. Bentley, because the more we, I thought that was an easy fix. But the more we looked at that, because, in fact, the county is more stringent than what state statute, that would actually roll back. It would have a negative, it would be positive for sex offenders and sexual predators, but it would be negative for the 99% of people that don't, you know, touch kids. So I, again, that sounds good, but unfortunately, that would have the exact opposite effect. And my, your one constituent would be very happy, however...
I know what you're saying with what you want to do with that, but, I mean, all we did was expand it, and it's adding in the sky zones and stuff, because the sexual predators or people that have that, I have to do background searches all the time on people. They know they're not supposed to go to specific places, and it's parks. But if we expand it out to private property where kids typically congregate, we have just put an extra bit of teeth as far as county. But I also know you've taught me this through the years. Whatever the state mandates, the county can't do less. So we're kind of under that anyways, correct?
So what the state does, to give you an idea, is, they say you can't live within a halo of a park. They don't necessarily say you can't congregate. The county has taken that as a congregation, and then expanded it from the 5,000, sorry, 500 to 1,000 feet. So if I'm mistaken of what I have heard from the county attorney's office, and that, in fact, goes to solve it by making our ordinance more strict, I certainly would support it, because it's a heck of a lot easier. But unfortunately, it, from my, I'm not an attorney, but from what I was told, that would have the exact opposite of that.
You had me hesitating. It was just something I thought of, and if I could have picked up the phone and done this, not looked dumb, I sure would have. But, okay, so I'll spend a little more time looking at that.
I would say, speak with Ms. Bentley. She can, because she's-
I can't quite see you, but I think we can probably look at the state definition and address both issues in a draft, and maybe we could circulate that and get that moving as quickly as possible, assuming we don't have any additional problems. I understand the intent. You want to go with the state as much as possible, and yet not weaken the regulation. You want to strengthen it.
Correct. If they were not mutually exclusive, I would be more than willing to add that.
And thank you for advocating for the kids. I'm always going to err on the side of the children and the vulnerable population, and I really appreciate you looking into this.
Commissioner Tabia, I'll jump in, if I may, real quickly. And I, you know, I think that the thing to keep in mind is, when you're talking about sexual predators, you're talking about someone that would otherwise qualify as a sexual offender, but they've been convicted of at least two second-degree felonies of that nature, or one first-degree felony of that nature. So to me, that's a clear problem. That's a clear danger. But, you know, using your example earlier, if you have, to talk about just sex offenders, if you have an 18-year-old that's working in a convenience store, and he sells a Playboy magazine to a 16-year-old kid, it's possible that person may be a sex offender. But to me, quite frankly, I don't know that that rises to the level of concern that I now want to prohibit them from accessing places they otherwise should be able to access. Predators, of course, that's a different story. That's why even on the license, there's a different designation, based on a different state statute, to identify someone as a predator versus an offender. The level of risk for a predator versus an offender is night and day in my mind. I don't want to punish someone that did something stupid, like sold a Playboy to a 16-year-old who might have looked 18, and that was the be-all, end-all. So I would certainly support it as to predators. I don't think I would support it at this juncture as to offenders. I do see we have a handful of cards on this, so if you want, maybe now is a good time to take those?
Yes. May I respond to?
Please.
Yeah. First of all, your issue, an example, and I'm not an attorney, but you understand it better than me, but the thing I do understand is, it sounds like your complaint isn't with Brevard County, it would be with the state of Florida. So I would encourage you to get in contact with your state representative, whether that be Randy Fine or Thad Altman, and explain that maybe that should be rolled back. That individual that inadvertently does that and lands on a registry is prohibited from being in a park right now. So I understand your concern. I don't necessarily agree or disagree with it, but that is something that would be handled best at the state level. I'm pretty adamant of having, as you know, as an attorney, many charges are pled down. So I don't want to know what actually happened and what the outcome was. So either one scares me, and I would not want my daughter or any of my nieces and nephews, I wouldn't make the distinction whether they're a predator or offender. If it bothers you that much, what I would be willing to do, and we did this carve-out for you on the alcohol, if you wanted to create a, I don't know, a sanctuary area for sexual predators in your county commission district?
Not predators.
Okay. Offenders in your county commission district? I would vote for it and encourage all minors to not go to your Lori Wilson Park without close monitoring. So if you want to do that tear-out, I certainly would-
I don't know this is one that I would really be in favor of a tear-out on. I mean, my thought is, this is really something that impacts folks in my district and other districts the same. I mean, I've gone to other districts' parks myself. I've had other people in districts other than my own come to my district's parks. So the problem is, it's going to impact, it's going to impact E2 residents regardless. But let's go to the cards. You know, maybe we'll hear something that'll change one of our minds. All right. I'll give you all the order, just so that we can have everyone lined up and on deck. First, we'll have Chris Marshall from Palm Bay, then Shannon Stewart from Merritt Island, Teresa Bond from Merritt Island, Dylan Burling from Melbourne, and Karen Burling from Melbourne, in that order. So let's start up with Mr. Marshall. Chris Marshall? Going once, going twice, going three times. All right. How about Shannon Stewart? Teresa Bond? Promise it's different handwriting. It's not all the same person punking me here. Dylan Burling? Karen Burling? That must be a first. That is bizarre. Well, I didn't hear anything that changed my mind. Oh. Do you not have a, do you put one in for a different item, or?
No.
Okay. If you come on up, if you would, please just put your name and your city of residence in the record. I'd appreciate that. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just looked through, and that's all we had.
Jason Perez. I reside in Melbourne, Florida.
Oh, hang on. Let me get you on, okay, so Jason Perez from Melbourne. All right, sir, I'll give you the floor.
Okay. I'm bringing down the reality. I'm not a sexual offender, but my loved one is. For the past six years, I've been residing according to the Brevard guidelines regarding this, and I 100% oppose this. You're right, it is stricter than what the state is, and now you're going to try to make it stricter. You can't-
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm going to restart your time, but could you start up, just so she can hear you?
Oh. Can I bring that up?
Yeah, maybe just get a little closer to it, or speak up some.
Sorry. I've been living this life for six years. Not a sexual offender. I do have five kids, and I have to live by these rules every day, because I'm worried that, whatever the case may be. Anyways, I oppose this 100%. Like, it's bad enough that my kids, I work two jobs and go to school. I have to take the kids, my kids, to the park, because my significant other can't. Do you know how hard it was to find a home within Brevard alone in Melbourne? Because within 1,000 feet, do you know how, what's the average baseball field is? Can you see, have you ever sat behind home plate and looked at the outfield and identified if it's a male or a female, or a child? All right? And now you're going to add 1,000 feet to that. So it's bad enough that she's already restricted, that she can't go to certain areas, she can't shop for certain food. We have to travel from Melbourne, but she has to travel from Melbourne all the way to Cocoa, to go food shopping. Okay? I know people that live behind a dumpster at Home Depot because they're sexual offenders and can't find a place to live. And now you want to impose this on businesses? Where is she supposed to take my kids to? Where are my kids going to be restricted to? How are they going to spend time with their mother, outside of the home? How is that even fair? You can't justify what someone did, as you brought up earlier, for a Playboy versus what someone did in a public parents. There's no classification as to, besides just predator and sexual offender. That's it. A crime is a crime. You have crime, you have different types of, level of crimes. Felonies from Class A, or from, what is it, A to D, and the same for misdemeanors. But you don't have that for sexual offenders. So you're judging everyone for one action that they could have done 20 years ago, a one-time, one-off. And I get it, I understand your concern. You're trying to do better for the community, you're trying to protect the kids. I'm all for that. And because of what one person did in one county, now it's, you got to spread it out for everyone else? Like, how is that even fair? Kids congregate everywhere. Video game stores, shopping centers, parks, anywhere. It doesn't even matter. The only place they don't go is to bars. So what you're going to do, restrict everybody into, you can't go anywhere but a bar? She can't even, she tried to work at a bar, it can't even serve alcohol, so she can't even be a bartender. So what is she supposed to do? How is that fair? As a father, I have to work two jobs, go to school, and be a mother at the same time just so my kids can have a decent life. And this is just, it's, I 100% oppose this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias, do you have any questions for him?
No, but I, I thank you for coming. I can't imagine the courage it, it takes to get up here and, and stand up for the rights of sexual offenders. That had to be extremely tough. But I, as a policymaker, am more concerned about the two classes of people. Those that committed sexual offenses on minors and those that didn't. And, and I'm, I'm more concerned with the 99% that, that are on the other side. And, and let me read Florida, when, when dealing with sex offenders, let me read you a statute. And statute is kind of interesting here because they, the legislature put in a tent. Normally, that's not done, but they did in this one. So this is Section 944 dot 606. The legislature finds sexual offenses, especially those who have committed their offenses against minors, often pose a high risk of engaging in sexual offenses even after being released from incarceration or commitment and protection of the public from sexual offenders is a paramount government interest. Sexual offenders have a reduced expectancy of privacy because of the public's safety and it is affected, and its effective operation of government. So it's not me, it's the, it's not only me. It's the legislature that has an intent that when a person is found guilty of these offenses, you give up rights. And having to drive a little bit longer to go to Publix or Winn-Dixie pales in comparison to, and I, I don't want to know because I, it, it would hurt me to even understand that people can commit these crimes on, on, on young folks, whatever innocence was taken away from people that don't deserve that. So again, thank you for showing up. Clearly, many folks didn't want to. And I, I do mean that from the, from, from the bottom of my heart. It, it takes a lot of courage to get up, to get up here and advocate on, on behalf of the rights of sexual offenders and sexual predators.
I do have one question, if that's okay?
It's up to Commissioner Tobias on this.
The Chair.
Up, up to you, sir. What would you like?
If this passed, not only do these people have 1,000 restriction, 1,000 feet restriction on parks, but if this passes and every business sign up, where would they be able to go? In general?
Where would they have the ability to go? To a business that was not 1,000 feet within an area that congregate, that, that children congregate?
It's limited now. What I'm saying is that where would, what life would they be able to do with anything? Just anywhere? That's, that's my-
Again, my, my, so I have a choice. I have a choice to look out for the 600-plus, 1,000 folks in Brevard County that have made a decision not to have a sexual offense on a minor or I have a decision to look out for the 867 folks that have made a decision, a bad, horrible, terrible decision to have a, to have committed a sex, sexual offense on a minor, whether that be a misdemeanor or a felony. As I explained, even the misdemeanors sound pretty horrific, sound pretty horrific to me. So that's not, my question is to look out again for the 99% of people that make good decisions, not the 1% of people that make bad decisions, especially when the legislature says that 1% has a higher propensity to engage in that same terrible activity over again. Again, not me, Florida statute 944 dot 606.
I would suggest that you at least look into how someone become-
I apologize, but I can't have the back and forth. If I could, I would, but I apologize.
And this is just permission to advertise. So to be clear, no matter what happens today, it's not, there would be more opportunities for the public to come in and, and nothing is, even if this does pass, it's not immediately going into effect. The Chair can explain that. So there would be other opportunities.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
I, I just wanted to, to state, I believe the intent of this, if I'm right, Commissioner Tobias, it's, it's, you know, you have parks where kids hang out, but now we also have businesses that are made specifically for children, the Sky Zones, the Video Places. And, and, you know, I know things are tough, but the goal is to reduce the risk and the danger to the vulnerable population. And I, I think sometimes we do certain things, and again, you, you know, you serve your time and whatever, but that doesn't mean you haven't lost the privilege to be able to do certain things. You know, if, if, if certain things that, that we do in society negate safety to other people because of what we've done, then, you know, it's just, it's just something you've, you've just got to deal with and, and figure out. So I, sir, my heart goes out to you. You sound like a wonderful father and, and a person. And, you know, with some things that, that we, we try to bring some kind of leadership to, there's always going to be a couple people outside that, that don't fit in these categories, but you've got to do what's best for the majority. So I, I still am probably, well, I am, I'm, I'm going to support this moving forward, and I, I hope we change the definition.
And Commissioner Tobias, I'll, I'll just reiterate my prior concern, and I, I agree. You know, ideally, the legislature up in Tallahassee would adjust things so that someone who sells a porno mag to a 16- or 17-year-old isn't potentially labeled a sexual offender for years to come. But, you know, the fact is, I've got to operate here with what the law is that's in place right now. And I, I just, I don't see further penalizing folks that are marginally on that list for reasons such as the, the one example that comes to mind. You know, certainly sexual predators, when you're talking first degree felonies or multiple second degree felonies, there's not really much of an excuse out there for that. I have no problem implementing the restrictions that you'd like to see with respect to that. But simply for offenders, given that there are a lot of people, I think, that get swept into that category, that frankly, if you listen to the circumstances, they wouldn't be traumatic for you to hear. I, I don't know that I can support it on that. You know, I'm sure the politically popular thing would be to crucify all of them regardless, but I, I just don't think that's the right thing to do in this circumstance. So, you know, I, you may well get it to pass either way, but if it doesn't pass with predator, or I'm sorry, with offenders in the mix, you know, make a motion right after to do it with, with just predators, and I'll support that. All right, Commissioner Pritchett, is that an open one?
I have a question, Commissioner Loeb, because you, you do bring up a good point. The item that Commissioner Loeb brought up, is it possible for them to come off of the sexual offender list?
Please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not 100, you know, that's covered under Section 943 dot 04354. I'm not an attorney, that's where it's located. And that deals with the age difference of, you know, there's a whole bunch of qualifications on there, you know, and I'm not an attorney, so I don't know. But I do want to reiterate that, remember that many of these offenders have pled down in order to become an offender. They have many effective attorneys, I imagine, as well as some of the offenders, transmission of child porn, knowingly selling obscene material to minors. It's not just accident, you know, Commissioner Loeb mentioned accidentally selling. That's not, Florida statute is knowingly selling someone. So that, that is, that is different. And sexual misconduct where the victim is in a facility for the disabled, that, that's, I can't believe that's not a predator, and that may be my fault for not fixing that when I was up in Tallahassee. But that is what would get you on the offender, not the predator list. And if you have a question, just put yourself in that situation. Do I want my child, or do I want my, do I, do I make that, do I make that difference? That my kid is okay with a offender and not a predator? I tell you, the decision I make, and it's reflected in, in, in the ordinance.
I, I can tell you with respect to that, as far as knowing, if you look at the actual jury instructions for that charge, there's nothing that requires explicit proof that they knew. I mean, you, you can infer that. And I, I got to tell you, I mean, you get the wrong jury, they're going to make the inference regardless. That's the concern that I have. And I, you know, I, I don't want to do something that's going to unreasonably punish certain individuals that quite frankly are already on a list that I think the folks who put in place that list wouldn't necessarily want them to be on.
Mr. Chair, so we created a registry, and I, and I hate asking this, but you're the one that brought it up. We created a registry for people that abused animals. So let me get the, so abusing a child is not as worthy of a registry, but abusing an animal is. And, and this comes different, right? Because you, you don't have, to the best of my knowledge, you don't have kids. You don't understand. I don't have animals. I don't understand. It's just, I, it's just a policy, it's just a policy difference that, that we may have. I, I'm just trying to, how do you, how do you explain why we have one for, for animals? Which, let me, I vote, I hope, I, I think I voted for it. I don't think abusing animals is okay, but I also think that abusing kids is just as bad, if not worse.
I don't think you voted for it, but be that as it may. So if you want to say it's analogous, then stick with your prior position.
I don't think that is similar. I, I don't think they're similar. I think abusing kids-
You're talking about animal abuse and child abuse. Sure, child abuse, if you want to say that that's, you know, no less evil than animal abuse, fine, I'm not going to argue with you on that. But you're not talking just about folks that have abused children. I mean, I'll just go back to the same example so we're not, you know, throwing out 100 analogies today. But you get someone that sells a Playboy or a Hustler to a kid that's 16 or 17 years old, maybe the one that's selling it is 18 or 19 years old. Is that really something where you will now want them prohibited to, to go to certain places as a result of that? I, I don't know that that really benefits anyone.
And I, I don't understand the jury, Mr. Chair, I don't understand the jury. I, I just know what Florida statute says. It says clearly, knowing, knowingly selling obscene. I, I, again, I'm, I'm not a judge, I'll never be a judge, but that's, that's what statute says. So, you know, I, I don't know the fancy words that a defense attorney would use or the instructions a judge would, but I can read state statute, and that's what it sells. And I honestly believe that if there's a mistake made, that you probably can answer this, and I don't want to get into the, you know, a defense attorney is probably going to, you know, if it was a sheer accident, probably go and, and hope for a different outcome.
Well, here, I'll, you know, let, let me give you, for the sake of the hypothetical, let's say that you have an 18-year-old kid in high school and a 17-year-old kid in high school. The 18-year-old just went to the 17-year-old's birthday party six months earlier. They know the kid's 17. They perfectly know. Is that, is that really in and of itself now worth prohibiting them? Even if they do know? Let's, I'll, I'll give you that for the sake of the hypothetical. Is it still worth prohibiting them now from going to other businesses? Are they a risk to children? I don't know that they are.
So my suggestion would be, would be this. There are some offenders that sexual, I don't, sexual misconduct where the victim is in a facility for the disabled. I mean, that is an offender.
Yeah, I'm good with including that.
So my suggestion would be is, let's advertise this. And if there are certain statutes that you don't think meet that threshold, maybe, maybe we can pull those one or two out. I, I, I would not be necessarily opposed. But to throw the baby, the bathwater out, I, I do not want someone that has sexual misconduct where the victim is in a facility for the, I can't even believe that, that that doesn't put you on the predator list. I don't want kids to be in that general vicinity thinking that they're going to have a good time in a private business. We protect them in a park. I think that equal protection should be at a private business is the, the private, private business that caters to, to those, to those same kids. So I would be open, you'd have my commitment if-
That's fair.
To do that.
I'll support it in that case, that's fine. Commissioner Zardini?
Yes, this is, again, and I think it was stated more than once, this is just permission to advertise. So we don't have any more cards on this, correct?
No, we're through them.
So I would like to see myself, you know, since it's just permission to advertise, some options. I definitely will be highly supportive of this. Again, I think I touched on it a little bit, my, my history with this. And I had actually was going to move forward with something much, much stronger, talking about putting signage in sexual predators' front yards. Imagine that, right? But it's been done in other places around the country because, just look up the definition of a sexual predator under our, our state, and you'll, you'll understand why. You wouldn't want your children anywhere near them. But anyhow, I'm, I'm happy to support this. So with that, I'm going to call the questions so we stop talking about it. So I'll make a motion to move forward with, for legislative intent on Commissioner Tobias's item.
Second.
All right, a second for Commissioner Smith for Commissioner Zardini's motion regarding Commissioner Tobias's item. All in favor? And again, this is just the advertisement. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the advertisement passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, in the meantime, if you wouldn't mind identifying those areas that you think wouldn't be worthy, and my understanding of sunshine, the same way you sent out the memo, if you could send those out so we could discuss them?
I'll do it that way. Just don't reply to me. And don't even acknowledge you got it, and that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'll, I'll have the clerk add it to the minutes again. Yeah, do you want me to take a few?
Just five, three minutes.
I'll give you five. I'm not, I'm not going to make you run. Nice, I want you to wash your hands before you come back. All right, we'll, we'll reconvene at 11:50, let's call 11:53. All right, so we're called back to order. It's 11:53. We're going to address this item, and then as soon as we're done, we're going to take one public speaker where the card, for whatever reason, just didn't make it up here. So let's, let's go ahead and do that. We've had a, a motion and a second, have we? Okay. All right, and with respect to that, we didn't do the vote yet, have we? Or did we? We did.
I thought we did.
We did. Did we not? Okay, see, these breaks throw me off horribly. All right, so, all right, with that said, okay, we're going to go. We have one individual who came here for public comment. I'm just going to ask him, before I start his time, to, to put his name and his city of residence on the record. And I apologize for whatever the cause was that, that got you tripped up.
My name is Dr. Michael Lesser. I live in Satellite Beach. I've lived in Brevard County for 52 years with occasional stints out to the University of Florida, where I graduated with honors and was elected to Phi Beta Kappa. I would then went to medical school at the University of South Florida College of Medicine for a three-year medical school, where I was elected to Alpha Omega Alpha, which is the honorary society, as well as receiving the Lang Medical Book Award for academic excellence for two consecutive years. I hold four separate board certifications in medicine, internal medicine, cardiology, cardiac computed tomography, and advanced metabolic medicine and anti-aging. The idea that you would require masks in Brevard County, in my opinion, is insane. And that's not why I was here. I was listening to the conversation. I did not hear a single mention of using funds to help businesses buy ozone generators. COVID is a respiratory virus. It is 120 nanometers in size. This is an N95 mask. Its pore size is .3 microns. The virus is floating in the air. The reason that you had such a severe event in New York is you had large numbers of people traveling in enclosed airspaces, which were untreated. You only need one sick individual to fill that whole car up with virons, and it's the viral load that causes the magnitude of infection. Viruses don't go through your skin. You have to inhale them. They have to enter your cells. They have to bind to the ACE2 receptor in the lung. There are plenty of studies actually that show, believe it or not, that the ACE2 receptor can be down-regulated by nicotine. can be downregulated by nicotine. So, you could actually wear a nicotine patch and help yourself maybe as much as wearing a mask. There are studies that have been published in France to prove that. So, before you guys start going about and doing crazy stuff and mandating masks, consider maybe helping businesses out by educating them and having, giving them financial help to buy ozone generators, especially those that are closed during the evening, because all they have to be, all that has to happen, you turn them on, they run for two to eight hours, the gas goes everywhere. It sterilizes everything. It kills 99.99% of all bacteria and viruses. I'm the medical director of Essential Spa here in Viera. I shut the whole place down two days after the governor issued his emergency declaration, because it was very unclear to me at the time what the virus was all about, how it worked, you know, what the potential treatments were, et cetera, et cetera. There are now well-documented outpatient treatments that are very effective when given early, and there are many treatments that can be given outside of what you've heard in the hospital to address this particular viral illness.
Sir, if I could have you just wrap up?
I'm done. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of these things before you do anything crazy.
Thank you, and I appreciate. I did find what happened with your card. It was actually put in for item K as in kilo, which is coming up actually after all the Js.
Well, I just, after I heard the discussion on COVID, it was just too much for me to listen to without saying something.
Just out of curiosity, under the subject that says Brevard County Autonomous Zone and Cryptocurrencies?
Yes.
Was that what you wanted to speak on, or?
That's what I was going to speak on, but my three minutes are up, so.
Mr. Chair?
I kind of really want to hear it.
I would certainly support three minutes on cryptocurrency.
Do you all mind?
Okay, well, I will also add, in addition to my academic honors, I am blessed. I am a Mensa Certified Genius. I have several U.S. software patents, and the reason I was going to speak on cryptocurrencies is because they are stable currencies. They cannot be printed at will, and if we encourage local businesses and local taxes to be paid in cryptocurrencies, it's possible that we can protect our community in the future from what I believe will probably be a hyperinflation of the dollar. Now, whether this will occur in 10 years or 15 years, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not, actually, I'm actually pretty good at predicting the future. You can read my book, but that's another thing altogether. It's just something that I think we should encourage for local businesses and taxes, because it will help people protect their savings. And protecting the purchasing power and savings of people who live here in this community, where I've lived for basically my whole life since I was 16, is an important thing to me. My mother lives here. She's 97. My grandson, who's seven, lives here. My step-granddaughter, who's one, lives here. So, most of my family lives here, and, you know, I can see a better future for them if the commission thinks about these things, and I will hand you my email. You can use it at will. I'm happy to give you my time and knowledge for free at any time, if anybody wants to know more about any of your stuff.
So, when you say you're a Mensa Certified Genius, does that also qualify you to man the genius bar at the Apple stores? All right, it was poor attempt at humor.
No, that's good. That's good humor. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So, actually, we don't have any further public comment. Let's go to J4. I've got three cards on this. Buzz Underhill from Melbourne, Kim Ruzenka from Cocoa, and Bruce Moya from Melbourne. So, even though it was submitted in that order, whatever order you all want to speak in, I'm happy to address it. Please.
I just wanted to disclose that I spoke with Mr. Moya and Ms. Ruzenka yesterday about this for about 10 minutes apiece regarding this item.
And I've had some texts exchanged with Ms. Ruzenka. I know we've spoken about it several times. Most recently, yes, I think it was yesterday, I exchanged some texts in which I asked her if she would waive any tolling argument in exchange for getting a 30-day extension, which was declined. So, that was essentially where it was left off.
Mr. Chair, do we need to disclose, is this a zoning item?
I don't think it does, but.
I don't know, because I did, too. I was just wondering if we're.
Yeah. Okay, all right, fair enough. Anyone have any other sins to confess? All right, Mr. Underhill?
Yes, thank you. Buzz Underhill, Melbourne, Florida. Had the opportunity to look at the packet that you had, and it just appeared to me that we were kind of getting down in the weeds, and I wanted to kind of draw back a little bit and kind of put things in perspective. It seems to me that what we're really dealing with is a form over substance matter, as it relates to this whole deal. The property that I represent has historically had 100% discharge into the Indian River, and when we were involved in the negotiations to settle the issue with the county, I think all of us, the county as well as myself, were interested in trying to minimize any damages going on into the lagoon, and so we agreed to mitigate for 25% of the solids that were historically going into the Banana River. We agreed to mitigate and to basically treat those in ponding through the site. We went ahead, and we did that a year ago. We created the ponds. The ponds were not created exactly the way the engineering was set up. Some of the ponds were a half an inch too shallow. Some of them were three or four, five inches too deep, but in reality, those ponds have been doing what we intended to do. They have been trapping the solids for a year. They did not technically meet the exact description on the elevation, and so we started, we had a meeting in October, after this, after the commission meeting. We had a meeting in October. In the first part of November, our engineers submitted a plan to county staff for approval to make the adjustments. We finally got a final on June the 2nd. On June the 3rd, I put it out to bid. We had one company that wanted to bid it, because it's such a small job. On June 26th, I signed that contract with them. They had a job on an IHOP that they were working on. They were scheduled to come in on July the 6th. They got on site. There was a lot of water on site because it had rained. The ponds were wet, and so they waited for a week. During that time, their lead guy got COVID, and so they're in there now. They're working on it. It's a project that only will take, on the ground, will only take a very short period of time. You have the letter from the contractor, you know, seven to 10 days, and that job will be finished, and it's nothing more than changing the contour a little bit on the ponds. But those ponds have been holding the water. They've been filtrating, as we had said, and I think our engineer will testify that we're probably getting 90, 95% of what we had agreed to do anyway. So, we're making the adjustments so that it's, so that it does meet the new plan. You know, will we be completed by tomorrow? Absolutely not. We won't be, but we will be finished making those adjustments fairly quickly. But then there's a process to go through to be able to get the approvals and everything else signed off. So, I'm.
If you could wrap up, sir.
I'm out of town.
You can wrap up. Just finish your, finish your thought.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, I just want us to really look at it and see what we're talking about. We're not talking about a gross mouth feces where we haven't done it. We, you know, we've been, for over a year, we've been treating that water. It just hasn't met the technical requirements, the exact requirements of the elevation, the bottom of the ponds on the, that were approved on the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ruzenka? Okay, then we'll let you swoop in for the wrap up. How about that?
Anybody have a copy of the letter you wrote, I sent to the commissioners?
Maybe a copy for the clerk, just so they have it. Thank you. Mr. Moya, welcome, sir.
Good, I was going to say good morning, but it's good afternoon.
Hey, that's true.
Yeah, thank you, Bruce Moya with MBV Engineering. I'm really just here to just to kind of figure out exactly where we are and what's left to do. So, where we are, as Buzz mentioned, we have the approved plans. The work is underway. It should be done shortly. Once that work is completed, the surveyor comes in, does an as-built survey. That as-built survey comes to our office. We check it to the county standards, and they, we send it back for them to make whatever adjustments they need to make. Then we make formal submitted to the county staff. They do their review. They make their comments. We get the surveyor to make the corrections, and we do that once or twice until we have the county approval. Then we're done. So, I just want to let you know that there is a process after even just doing the work, and Buzz is correct. There are ponds already there. They're just not, they weren't done per the plan, the original approved plan, so that's why we went through this revision process that took some time to get done. But I feel that if the work is done, and then the as-built survey process is run through a regular process, you know, we're probably 60 to 90 days away from being 100% complete with this whole process. Any questions, if you have any?
Maybe in the coming minutes. All right, Ms. Ruzenka?
Good afternoon. Chairman Loeb, members of the county commission, I'm here on behalf of Banana Riverfront. Kim Ruzenka with Cantwell and Goldman. I put in the agenda request because I've been trying to work through this process for a couple of months and not been able to get any real direction. As it says on the agenda request, we have three permits. One is a site plan permit. One is a temporary CO, and it's my opinion that the settlement agreement is actually a development order. I was looking for direction, because once the disaster hit, a statute, in my opinion, came into play, Section 252.363, which is the tolling section. There's a natural disaster that's declared, and so that's what I was trying to get direction. We believe that that extension is correct, but we've also asked for, alternatively, to extend the denlight to the bond date. Mr. Moya has said 60 to 90 days. 90 days puts us at October 20th, still six days to call the bond. However, calling the bond would be severely inefficient here, because there's less than 10% of the bond that is needed. It's a very minor amount of work that needs to be done, and it is moving forward, as the contractor said and as the owner has said. The request that I put forward, I believe was factual. I did not intend to blame staff. I was trying to show that many, many attempts had been made. Things came out on the ground that didn't actually work right. The water level table was different than was given to us by Universal Engineering, a well-respected vendor. So, the staff, our report was not to place blame on staff. Staff has worked with us, and I wanted to make that clear. There were disagreements with staff over the process about whether we had to bring everything up to code standards, and those discussions took some time. This settlement agreement from 2017, which I sent to you all again, and which I have copies and gave one to the clerk, was a result of a denial of the rezoning, and it was a subsequent Burt Harris mediation. So, it was a negotiation, as was somewhat of the same tact as Preserve Park, Preserve Palm Beach PAC case that I cited and that I supplied. So, we believe that in that settlement agreement, we tried to cover everything, but as we've come to see, that we couldn't cover everything. Things have come up along the way. There are some ambiguities in it, but what is clear is that the only remedy for failure to complete all these site plan improvements are the calling of the bond, and it's not a material breach. It's a very minor amount of what's not been completed. So, we don't think that the settlement agreement can be deemed void. Another incident is in 1A, which I cited. It said Banana Riverfront shall be entitled to a certificate of completion upon posting a performance bond. That bond's been completed. Yet another ambiguity. We've raised this before, and we have let it sit, but now it may be an issue to bring back. Banana Riverfront wants to get the work completed. It's almost been a Murphy's Law. Every time we move forward, something else happens. They have been moving forward. They are doing the intent of the settlement agreement, and we ask that to extend the deadline to 90 days or provide direction regarding whether or not these permits are extended by Section 252.363.
Thank you, and while either Mr. Denninghoff or Mr. Culkins makes his or their way up here, I just want to give a little background to folks in terms of where this was left off months and months ago. So, as you may recall, I believe it was Commissioner Tobias that put up an agenda item sometime back regarding this. I had asked to have the opportunity to meet with them. I did meet with them, along with county staff, including county legal staff. They asked for a certain amount of time. I offered them more time than what they were asking for, which quite frankly, I don't think they were entitled to, with the understanding that I didn't want to hear about things being impracticable between then and completing the project. I believe the language that I used at the time was we have time for multiple natural disasters or acts of God to take place, because this is giving you, I believe it was maybe two months longer than they needed. Give it three months, Commissioner Smith, three months longer than they had originally asked for, which gives them time for multiple acts of God or natural disasters. I recall that real specifically. So, with respect to whether it's a hurricane or two hurricanes or COVID, it doesn't change anything in my mind. I specifically said I don't want to hear about impracticability. What I can tell you is, now what I'm hearing is that it's nothing more than changing a little bit of contour on the pond, and that it's a minor amount of work to be done. If it's that minor, why wasn't it done? When I spoke with Ms. Ruzenka, I communicated with her, I think by text, about a month or so ago. This was sometime in June. She was asking about, I guess, the county's interpretation of whether or not the tolling would apply to them, and my response was essentially, have them complete the work ASAP. It's not verbatim what I wrote. I can give it to you all if you want. I'm sure I could pull it up sitting here, but when this came up yesterday, I was still willing to potentially give her another 30 days in exchange for her waiving any arguments pertaining to tolling. If it's really that small amount of work, that's where I would be at today. I'm not willing to give any more than 30 days. So, what I'm going to ask, after staff has a chance to introduce this, and I've spoken at length to staff, both legal and planning and development, is I'm going to ask to have the request denied, and then secondarily, after we deny the request, to see if Ms. Ruzenka is willing to waive tolling in exchange for a 30-day extension. If she's not, then I'm sorry. It's unfortunate. We can go for the bond. So, that's where I'm at. Tad?
Good morning, Board. I think a lot of information has been presented here. It's been presented correctly. You know, the board gave us direction last October that they would get a single nine-month extension to finish the work. That expires tomorrow, and here we are, looking for another extension, which would be the sixth extension to this project. So, in the board's direction was for us to call the bond if the work wasn't done without coming back before you. So, the applicant, Mr. Underhill, and his folks are here now asking for another extension. The proposal to look at this through the, or falling under Florida Statute 5, I'm sorry, 252, I don't believe that we feel that it falls under those provisions. Eden may be able to explain more, if you want more information on that.
Let's have that, if we may.
Sure.
Ms. Bentley?
252, if this were a normal permit situation, yes, 252 would extend. However, this situation arises from a code violation and illegal construction and subsequent efforts to cure that, and therefore, I think it falls under the exceptions of Chapter 252.363.
So, essentially, what you're saying is it's distinguishable from the case law presented by Ms. Ruzenka?
Exactly.
Appreciate it. All right, Tad?
So, if you all have any questions, we can talk, you know, I'm happy to answer them. For our standpoint, I don't know if John has anything to add or not.
Oh, he moved on me. Mr. Denninghoff, do you want to come up and chime in a little?
Well, I'd only, I would only add that the, there was a great deal of difficulty getting through a number of technical issues associated with the site plan. Just want to remind that the reason we were doing, it was actually an engineering modification to the site plan, and the reason we were doing that was because there was a number of features associated with the originally approved site plan that were not constructed, one of which was the stormwater system. It wasn't constructed in compliance with what that approval was. So, that required a engineering approval or modification and an associated approval, which we were able to achieve on June 2nd. The, I think Mr. Underhill's pretty accurately expressed when work actually got started. According to our efforts, which were, we went by frequently by the site, work was begun last week. We don't know exactly what day, but we think that they got about three days of work in last week. I think that his representation as to how long it would take is pretty accurate. It's, we, our engineers thought that last week was probably going to take 10, 10 days, 12 days maybe, to get it done. That was before we realized they had about three days in, so, you know, so they're nine, 10 days away, we think, from being able to complete it.
So, 30 days ought to be sufficient?
To complete the work would be more than sufficient, and the as-built process, if it's been built in accordance with the approved plans, that goes very smoothly. If it has not been built in accordance with the approved plans, then it gets a little bit more difficult to deal with, and it will drag on in that circumstance. So, I want to point out that there was a number of changes to the parking area, which changed the handicap parking spaces, which involved ADA accessibility routes, which rendered the drainage design to become a more complex situation, and so we've been in a process of making sure that the ADA was complied with, and. which we don't have the right to waive or reduce the standards to either in a stipulated settlement or any other sort of circumstance.
Are you suggesting, I apologize, are you suggesting that what was submitted would not have been in compliance with ADA?
Well, our, well, we found a problem, as Ms. Rosenka indicated, we found a problem with their water table information, and what that resulted in and translated into was that the accessibility areas were going to be flooded at various points in time. And so, they corrected that when we got it all figured out, and so now we're ready to go.
Mr. Denninghoff, when you say that you found a problem with respect to that portion of the submittal, was that a problem that we somehow caused? Was it reliance on our information?
No.
So, it was not a problem attributable to the county?
No.
Okay. Mr. Pritchett?
Yeah, don't leave Mr. Denninghoff. This is one of, the first ones when I got elected to County Commission that we had to really do a lot of studying on and get information together. I got a little tickled with the substance of reform one, because this is the one where we revisited our building, did a bunch of changes, and didn't have any permits, correct?
That is correct.
And so, I remember when we first went through this, trying to figure it out, I think the commission at that time graced it, so they could go back and fix things, get it in compliance, and maybe permit it. And that was like four years ago. I have to say that I think if you were going to pick a lawyer, Ms. Rosenka was the one to go with. If you didn't have her, you would have been sunk a few years ago on this with the compassion of the commission. Commissioner Loeb, I'm going to vote with what you want to do with this, sir. You're the one that's got to live with it. I really would hope we don't have squid lips come back. I hope you're doing great with your business, sir, but I hope this never comes before this commission again with the same thing. But I think the four years of patience and grace, I think, has been a lot. So, I just want everybody out there in TV land to hear that, because otherwise, we're going to sound like we're really mean right now.
We've bent over backwards. I don't have.
No, we've been really patient. So, Commissioner Loeb, I'm with you on this, because I do feel like you guys, John, have been a little bit abused with your time and stuff through this process, and it really should have never happened, so.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you get a chance, I suggest reading the staff report. It was very interesting to not only see the amount of time that went in here, but also, I assume this made it to Mr. Denninghoff's desk. And if anyone was tired of this situation, I can't imagine anyone, I mean, Mr. Denninghoff was the head of that depart, right? I mean, he's changed jobs since this. We, it is incredible. And we're talking about seven days of work here. So, after an extension, I think it started six months, and if you get an opportunity, rewind and go back, it's all on tape of what Commissioner Loeb said about the nine months. He couldn't have been any more correct. I am going to ask for a little bit of indulgence on your part, Commissioner Loeb.
You got the floor, sir. Go for it.
And let me tell you why. If Mr. Denninghoff can, it says in here that this equates to a total possible timeframe of five weeks. So, you mentioned 30 days. If Mr. Denninghoff can see it in his heart to offer 35 days, now here's the, here's
That's fine.
Here's the issue, what it comes down to. I'm a teacher, and I allow students to turn in their papers early, their essays. And I tell the students that I will get them back as soon as possible, so they can make corrections and turn in a paper that they're ultimately proud of. So, I get it, and then I turn some papers back the next day. The reason I turn back some papers the next day is because these are the students that have like a 95, and they're shooting for 100. They did a really darn good job. However, some people turn in some papers that are like 65, and unfortunately, it takes a couple of days. I mean, when you turn in a one-paragraph, 10-page essay, it takes a little bit of time. And I guess that's the best, nicest analogy that I can think of on this, but if a decent paper is turned in on nine days a week, I have confidence that John is going to get this back to the folks as soon as possible. In fact, I would be willing to say, or ask a motion for him to send us an email the second he gets it, and send us an email the second he releases it. I guarantee you, it would jump to the top of his desk. And if he is willing to offer 35 days, it's more generous than me, sir. So, anyone that says that, you know, John's a hard, you know, put in human anatomy, that they're absolutely incorrect. John is showing, John is showing his heart here. I don't want to get into the history of this, because it predates me. So, I would ask the same indulgence that we get from Mr. Denninghoff for you, and what that would be, would grant the extension that was offered there of 35 days. I'm going to trust our county attorney, that the tolling argument that you made, I think it was a very good one. I agree with the county attorney that since this is a settlement agreement, it falls outside of that, but why not put it in there? We're giving plenty of time. And then reaffirm the remainder of the settlement agreement. I think that's, I think that's more than generous for, again, seven days worth of work. Now, we talk about whether, you know, and I'm not an engineer, so I called an engineer and said, "If you've got water in a pond, how do you get it out?" And there are pumps that de-water ponds, so you don't have to wait for a long extended period of droughts. Apparently, people do building in the rainy season here in Brevard. It's a little bit more of a cost, but I guarantee you, it probably pales in comparison to the amount of time, effort that staff went through for this. So, I know you have a motion, or will have a motion on the, you know, I'd like to give a backup after yours gets done to grant 35 days. That's in the, that's in the staff report, assuming the tolling's waived.
Right.
And reaffirm the remainder of the settlement agreement.
I'm good with that. You know, I think the first thing, first order of business is to reject the request. So, can we have a motion to reject the request, then we can move on to the next?
Sure, yes, go ahead.
All right. May I take that as a motion to reject the request?
Sure.
All right. I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Tobias's motion to reject the citizens' request. It was put onto the agenda as Item J's and Juliet 4. All in favor of rejecting the request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to rejecting the request? Okay, the request has been rejected. So, now, really what I'd like to see is to get on the record that they're willing to, that they are waiving tolling in exchange for being granted a 35-day extension. And additionally, I'd like the motion to include that it doesn't come back before the commission again. I really don't want to hear about it in the future. We've wasted so much time, and staff has wasted so much time. Just go for the bond at that point. And I, you know, in terms of the citizens' agenda item, I'm not going to sign off. I know we've altered the policy. Now, you have to have a commissioner sponsor a citizens' agenda item. I wasn't real strict on this one. I wanted to give them every opportunity to make their case. I'm not going to sign off on it next time, so it's going to have to be another commissioner, but otherwise, it's just not even going to be added. Is that, is that your motion? Essentially, to give them 35 days extension? If they, before they, before we vote on it, get on the mic and say they waive any tolling arguments they might be entitled to make?
If that's what needs to be done to get them on the record, I would, I would be, and I would greatly thank the generosity and the kind-heartedness of Mr. Denninghoff.
He's a kind man. Ms. Bentley?
I have a draft of an amendment to the mediated settlement agreement to address the tolling, if you'd like to look at it, if you'd like.
Has Ms. Rosenka had a chance to look at it?
No. I didn't know where this was going today.
Okay. Do you, how do you want to do it? Do you want me to take five minutes so that you can discuss it, whether and we can reconvene again? Will that work? Okay, we'll reconvene around 12:30.
Two. I know we're getting late in the meeting, but let's try to keep it together as best we can. So Ms. Bentley, have you had a chance to discuss with Ms. Ruzenka the proposed settlement agreement that you circulated before we went to break?
I did. I think she will probably want to speak for herself. My understanding is that they are not willing to agree to that.
Okay. All right, Ms. Ruzenka, do you want to come up and say your piece?
Sure. Obviously, this is a surprise to me. There are things in here that we -- there's no way in the world you would let your lawyer -- you would let your client agree to. We're not saying there's a health, safety violation. We're not saying the stormwater is noncompliance. We believe that both of those are inaccurate. He will agree to the 35 days, but he's worried about waiving any rights. We seriously disagree with Ms. Bentley's analysis of whether or not the settlement agreement is a development order. The site plan is still valid, and the temporary CO is a permit which is definitely told. So he's waiving valuable rights.
Ms. Ruzenka, let me ask. So what you're saying is he's willing to take a unilateral extension without giving anything whatsoever in return?
Well, I'm telling you --
I wouldn't want to beat you on the front.
I'm telling you what my client's telling me. It's telling me. I mean --
I've had clients like that, too.
But, you know, it's pulling the bond at this point. It's going to take longer. He's going to continue to do the work even if you pull the bond. You're going to make his life more difficult by pulling the bond when he's trying to get the work done.
Well, he's not --
And so there is a natural disaster. I mean, there is a reason for that statute. It's not just out there because of no reason. You have a lot of people that have problems. You had a contractor die. You had one of the workers get COVID. I mean, there are things that happened along the way. I understand you didn't want impossibility, but sometimes it happens. That's why we have lawyers. That's why we have courts. We don't want it to go that far. I don't think it will. But he agreed to the 35 days, and then you can pull the bond. Otherwise, he's going to continue on, and we'll see what happens, and it could be a tug-of-war out there.
Okay. I appreciate, Ms. Ruzenka. You did as admirable a job as anyone could expect to you. So certainly, it's no slight to you, but I'm not, you know, I'm not willing to give a unilateral extension without anything being exchanged for it. So my thought is there's no further action. We need to take on the item unless someone feels compelled to do otherwise. Mr. Tobias?
Can you -- or can I ask Ms. Bentley?
Please.
Can you explain the status quo? We'll call the bond. He will continue, whether he continues to work on the project or not, he will continue to be able to operate the business. Is that correct?
Well, I believe we will pull the certificate, the temporary certificate of occupancy because he's not in compliance. I'm sorry, because he's not in compliance. We'll call the bond, and I assume that we will look at code enforcement action immediately.
And this is entirely avoidable, but he doesn't want to waive any tolling requirement. I mean, frankly, we're in a position that he wasn't entitled to get to in the first place. He has been given every benefit of even nonexistent doubts. I don't have empathy at this point. I really don't. So essentially, there is an argument made that out of Tallahassee, there is a change which serves to extend by a certain amount of time, the duration that he would have to comply. Ms. Bentley doesn't believe that it applies. I think she has a good argument with respect to it not applying. Ms. Ruzenka believes that it does apply, or at least that there's an argument to make that it applies. That's, I mean, that's kind of the nuts and bolts, definitely, the nuts and bolts, Cliff Notes version of it. But if they're not willing to waive tolling, I wouldn't do a thing. I wouldn't extend it by five minutes.
You're good at -- Mr. Chair?
Please, and then Commissioner Nardi.
I mean, it sounds like the business is, you know, going to shut down, whether there's legal action one way or another. You know, that's outside of, that's out of our control. Are you aware of, is there a middle ground to be, is there a middle ground to be had there?
I think we've offered it.
I'm wondering if we were to pull the certificate of occupancy for a period of time until which the situation was ameliorated, that would, you know, it's not as good as the first offer, but it sounds like the second offer, or, sorry, the status quo is pretty draconian.
It's an emergency created by one side after a prolonged set of interactions with staff where they've had every ability to make this go away. And in fact, if they changed their mind right now, they could tell us, and this wouldn't happen. But they've elected not to do that. If you'd like, I mean, the middle ground that I see, it's not really a middle ground necessarily, is to have a motion to authorize county staff to enter into an agreement extending this by 35 days, should the applicant agree to waive any tolling entitlement. And if they change their mind in an hour, in six hours, or perhaps even tomorrow, then that's the case, if it gets, you know, if it gets addressed before the bond's pulled.
Well, that, the time would clearly have to, I think that's a great, with the one exception, that that time would have to start now. You couldn't make that, you know, three weeks. The time would have to start immediately.
Yeah, so 35 days from right now.
Yeah, as they go through the process of looking at the potential outcomes, I don't think, I think that's a great option.
Okay, so if you want to make a motion, or I can take that as a motion to authorize staff to, staff, and if I need to sign something, well, I need to sign anything, yes.
Authorize the chair.
Authorize the chair and authorize staff to execute any necessary documents in order to extend by 35 days the duration to comply with this, provided that a waiver of all tolling requirements is made by the other party.
At time which starts immediately.
Time starting now.
Correct.
All right, that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, and this is a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Commissioners Nardi, I'm sorry. I said I was going to get to you.
It's been on for a while, and I've been waiting. I, you know, obviously, you could blame, squid lips, you could blame, you know. I have seen a little bit on both sides, and I know the county has bent over backwards. I can't say the amount of work that we put into it, and I agree with Commissioner Tobias on that thing. But the goal is to get it to compliance. The goal is to get the business. And I'm a little nervous about asking them to waive their rights because it may have other impacts that we're not aware. We never really had a straight answer on that until now as well, on the tolling. So I don't think it's a big deal myself. This isn't a negotiation as far as a deal between the two, and I think 35 days isn't the end of the world. I mean, and threatening to shut them down, and threatening to pull a bond, and holding a CO, I think is just crazy. I mean, talking 35 days. If he fails to comply, we pull it. He's doing work that was negotiated upon based on preventing runoff from the lagoon. Again, he was late, and that stinks. And I'm not saying he deserves a free pass for that, but we're talking 35 days. You know, this isn't a divorce settlement. We don't have to say, okay, you give and I give. It's just what we decide to do. I want to see him in compliance, definitely. And has he made huge mistakes along the way? Sure he has. And we've pretty much kicked his teeth in for it. And staff has put in a crap ton of time. There's no question about it. But let's just get him there. Yes, Eden?
There is another option. You could deny the request as you have. You could direct us to pull the temporary certificate of occupancy, and then direct us to delay calling the bond for a period of time.
I wouldn't give it 35 seconds.
Okay, that really wasn't what I was suggesting, but I appreciate the input.
And I'm just looking here for my text messages. This is back from last month to Kim. "I spoke with John in person, and staff is planning on, I'm sorry, staff is not planning on extending completion time. My strong recommendation is for your client to get things done ASAP," all caps, "before July deadline." So this was not a surprise to anyone.
But I'm sure the death of somebody and COVID and everything else probably was a little bit of a surprise.
And I gave them months longer. Sir, we're not going to have a back and forth. I apologize. I mean, the bottom line is they were given more time than they requested with the very explicit, as I believe Commissioner Tobias mentioned, but Ms. Bentley can mention as well. It was at least as explicit when we had the meeting in the county attorney's office that I didn't want to hear any excuse for why it wasn't done. So I don't have any empathy at this point. My empathy has dried up. Commissioner Pritchett?
Again, just to define this, it's a small amount that's left to be done, and it should have no reason why it couldn't be done in 35 days, and then all this just goes away anyways.
If they, yeah, if they would agree to a 35-day extension and waive any tolling arguments they have, then that's fine. That's up to them. But if they don't want to do it, they're putting us in a position that...
So logic says that we're really not going to get it done in 35 days anyways, and this is going to come back if we don't, since we add some time to it. Now, I mean, if you came up and you said, "I need 41 days," you know, that might be very prudent at this time. But I agree, if we got a small amount done, and you say it's only going to take a few weeks to do, I don't understand the significance of the 35-day timeline, and then everything is fine.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to remind this board that, as much as I can remember, and sometimes I can't remember yesterday, sometimes I even have trouble with my name. No, it's not that bad. I've been dealing with this since 2015. So what you guys have been hearing is what you've been hearing, but I've been hearing it a lot longer than you have.
Were there excuses back then as well?
Yes. So I just want to see it get done. You know, I understand he's a businessman. I don't, for the life of me, understand why it keeps taking as long as it does. He's the guy that has the, signs the checks. He can crack the whip.
So you're saying the --
We gave him six months, nine months ago, and you were kind enough to say, "I'll throw in another three months just to give you all the extra time you possibly could ever need."
So what you're saying is the contractor may have died from old age working on this project?
I'm not sure what's happened here.
All right, Commissioner Tobias, let's get to it. If you don't mind, would you mind making a motion authorizing the chair and authorizing county staff to execute any necessary documents in order to grant them a 35-day extension starting today in exchange for their waiving any tolling arguments they may have?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
That would be my motion, adding in the reaffirm, reaffirming the remainder of the settlement agreement.
Perfect.
So there's no changes there.
All right, and this is my second to that motion. So all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, thank you all. And Ms. Ruzenka, I think you did a great job with what you had. I really do. You know, I've had cases where things have been better and worse than others, and this is one of those. I do not envy you. All right, public comment. Let's take a look here. We addressed one from Dr. Lesser. So that's done. L. Board reports.
Can we hear it for him again, Mr. Chair?
Dr. Lesser?
I'd appreciate it.
If he's around, we can hear about, we can hear about his book, perhaps. All right, Mr. Bate?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. I have a number of items I want to go over.
Oh, no.
The first one being that...
Get comfy.
The first item being the small business PPE program. Want to let you know that that did get underway yesterday, and in the first day, we had 212 applications received. That will be continuing until July 31, the online application at brevardfl.gov. Anyone can, in businesses that are qualified for that, can make the application, and we will be getting them those, that PPE package that the board has approved. That's the first program. And I wanted to mention that that program is limited to certain types of small businesses of 25 or less. That's what the board has approved. The second item I wanted to mention was the Small Business and Nonprofit Economic Relief Program. I want to give you a couple of updates. The first is that, after discussions with the chamber, we tried to get to a place where they would administer the program. We gave them a draft contract, and they let us know that, after reviewing where things were, they did not think that was a good fit for them. So they declined the opportunity to move forward in administering the program. So we are now going to do it internally with staff. We'll use staff from all the different departments. I met with senior staff yesterday, and we have strategized the plan moving forward. We'll be meeting with the directors tomorrow, and then we will be meeting with the appropriate staff that will be involved in reviewing applications as they're received. And we'll be meeting with that staff starting on Friday. We, so we anticipate that program being in place for online applications from July 27 through August 10. That will be the period when businesses can apply for that program, or nonprofits can apply for the program. Mentioning nonprofits, as all of you, I'm sure, will recall, at the last board meeting, issue came up, and you directed the county attorney to look at options relating to nonprofits, to address concerns that the board had raised. For us to move the program and the application forward, we really need board direction relative to any of the input that the county attorney's office provided. County manager's office worked with the county attorney on doing that, but she did the bulk of the work in that. And one of the areas that we thought the board might want to consider, in addition to what Eden has outlined in her memo that you have, was the issue of nonprofit IRS status as a 501(c) and which type of C agencies, and we were recommending C-3, C-19, and if the board wanted to include the chambers, C-6. C-6 would be businesses that were chambers of commerce or business leagues, such as the League of Women Voters, would be included in that. So that, those are three types of 501(c) agencies that the board might want to include. We just need to get the board's direction so we know how to complete the application, and then be able to move that forward. So we're hoping for board direction on that.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I mentioned this on your mask proposal.
Yes, sir.
And I want to thank, first of all, Ms. Bentley's office for doing an amazing task of going through the nonprofits that were out there and deciding which ones met that objectionable criteria, but without using any criteria to say that it was absolutely objectionable. So the tax status works. I would like to advocate for the first two of the three that Mr. Bate said, 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(19), for two reasons. Reason number one, the federal paycheck protection, the PPP, only allowed organizations that were 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(19). So we would just be mirroring what the federal government had decided. That's number one. And what, number two, what makes 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(19) different from the other ones? They have strict federal restrictions from lobbying. So in other words, we are not contributing to organizations that turn around and take some of the taxpayer money and give it to lobbyists who turn around and give it to us. So this is a perception type of arrangement, and certain chambers give money to lobbying organizations that turn around and give it to us. So this is not happening necessarily in Washington, D.C. This happens here in Brevard County. If you got a money, if you got a check from Business Voice at one time or another, that was money that came from the chamber. I have no problem. They haven't given me money this time, but previous to that, this is money that came from businesses. Now, we would be funneling money from taxpayers into these organizations that would end up in our campaign accounts. So for the reasons to mirror the federal PPP funds and the reasons to keep money out of lobbyists' hands that turn out to us, I would advocate for limiting the nonprofits to the 501(c)(3)'s and the 501(c)(19). The fewer organizations that get it, the argument would be made, if we have a pot of $10 million, the more money that would go to the businesses that help to employ folks. So that was, I believe, option number two.
You want to do some horse trading, Commissioner Tobias?
We were on the same side last time. What do you want to trade?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, this could be a little ask.
And we're only two votes, so you and I, you and I have failed before.
All right, so here's what I'm thinking. I'll support that if you will also support allocating out of the unallocated portion of the CARES Act, or we could even take it out of the 10 million. I don't care either way if that would be a make it or break it for you, up to, or a cap of 100,000 per commission district, where the commissioners would be able to allocate that funding to either not-for-profits or nonprofits which comply with the federal CARES Act requirements but are otherwise excluded due to county policy. So in this case, one of the policies would be if it's a C-6. I don't plan on giving a penny to a C-6, but if someone feels really compelled in their heart to give to a particular C-6 or a C-whatever, they can do that as long as it still gets vetted by staff to make sure it's compliant with the federal requirements. And if someone doesn't do it, then it's, you know, 100,000 less that's potentially on the table. Commissioners Nardi, and then I see Commissioner Tobias' wheels turning.
I would just say, I mean, what if, like I say, a C-6, it seems to be, the chamber seems to be the subject of John's crossfire, and that's okay. I get it. But quite honestly, most people, like, from businesses that write people checks for running, I mean, you could easily argue that as well. And many big businesses also have more paid lobbyists than some chambers do. And I know, I think it's the Melbourne Chamber doesn't even have a lobbyist, a paid lobbyist, I don't believe. Could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that they don't. Maybe that, make that a requirement, just say, you know, they qualify if they don't, if that's your, if that's your gripe.
But for how long?
And, and...
I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, but you're...
So, yeah.
But you talk about picking winners and losers. That's exactly what you're doing. You're saying they're excluded because their lobbyists may go to Tallahassee and get them money, or...
Listen, I like your argument, but I'm fighting a losing battle right now. Here's, here's the response. You avoid this altogether, is you take this money that is our grandkids' and our great-grandkids' money, and you send it back to Washington, D.C.
Because they spend it so correctly when you do that, and they will...
No, that it goes to the treasury, so it's not spent. And either way, just because they waste money doesn't give us the right to waste our grandkid. I, quite frankly, won't do it. I like the idea. It's very, it's very interesting. It would be fun writing a $100,000 check to the U.S. Treasury. The only time that that would be okay. But not that, not that I don't...
I'll let the treasury count.
Not that I don't trust anyone... Not that I don't trust anyone here, I just don't think that that, you know, puts us in the best. And as far as, when it goes to the chamber, here's what happens. It's not rocket science. I mean, it's very simple. The chamber transfers money to, in Brevard County, to Business Voice, direct transfer. There are receipts. I'd be more than willing, and they have to... And then Business Voice turns around and writes checks. So does the chamber have a lobbyist? Well, they have hundreds of lobbyists in Washington, D.C. They have at least 10 lobbyists, individual as well as contracted lobbyists, in Tallahassee. Do they have a lobbyist here in Brevard County? No, but they play in elections. They absolutely play in elections, and there is a direct correlation.
But do they do it, or do their members? Because I think you're giving, and I don't mean any offense, and I probably will cut my own throat by saying this, but I think you're giving Business Voice way too much credit.
I am, I mean, listen...
Up until last year, nobody would even talk to them because of what some of their members were doing.
I still don't.
No. Honestly, if a politician can be bought with $1,000 check from the Business Voice, then everybody's doomed. Because I'll tell you, a lot of, I know some of those members, and they're good business owners, and I know accountants, and I know people that I'm sure you respect.
I support, I support them.
It's not like they're building signs or working on street corners, I promise.
Whether they, and to my knowledge, they haven't endorsed either me or my opponent. They haven't given me any money in this cycle, just, you know, to be very fair. I support their decision to play in campaigns. I encourage everyone to play in campaigns, whether it be volunteering or direct contributions. So I support Business Voice or any other organization out there doing it, wholeheartedly. Here's where my issue is. Now we're taking public dollars and giving it to an organization that is playing in races. Then I have a problem with, it's the same thing with giving it charities. Yeah, it's good to give to politicians, but you probably shouldn't be giving public money to politicians. The same way it's good to give private money to charities, but you probably shouldn't be giving public money to charities. So, you know, I don't disagree with you. My, you know, I...
I get your point.
Horse trading was giving it to 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(19)'s. The reality, I'd like to give it to, back to the federal government, because the money, as Commissioner Smith has said, doesn't exist. This is money that is borrowed from future generations. I wish they understood the amount of debt, the 20, more than $26 trillion of debt that they are being born into. And by saying that, hey, listen, this is a small percentage, yes, it is. But it's also $105 million, which, in my book, is certainly a lot of money. So I can vote for the 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(19), but I can't, you know, vote to have these little, you know, pockets of money, whether they come within the $10 million or whether they come outside the $10 million. But my other commissioners, the other commissioners may disagree altogether. And I would ask Mr. Bate, did you happen to, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Please.
Yes. Did you happen to look at the number of charities that fit the 501(c)(3), 501(c)(19), and those that fall outside that?
Yes, there's about 500 nonprofits that are 501(c)(3) in Brevard County.
That are 501(c)(3)?
Right.
What about 19?
I don't know. I don't think there's that many.
Okay, and how many charities are there altogether?
We have no idea.
Okay. So that's another thing, if you're...
You say charity, you mean nonprofits.
Sorry, sorry, nonprofits. You have no idea?
No.
Okay, so, you know, if we have a pot of money of $10 million, and there's a cap of 500, that's more money that would go to businesses. I guess that's a policy decision, whether or not we want to include that or not. I'm on the idea of airing it just to the (c)(3)'s and (c)(19)'s.
All right, we'll hear from Commissioner Smith, and then Commissioner Pritchett, and then I'll jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think the comment was made at the last meeting that, it's funny that Commissioner Tobias wants to put limits on something he's not going to vote for anyway. So I think that's worth repeating. I want to see this money, if we're going to spend it, I want to see it go to as many places as we can get it. I think the whole purpose of the money is to get money into the economy, and quicker the better. And I said that over the phone last time. Because if it's sitting in a pot in the county, and it's not being used, then there's no purpose. The purpose is to get it out into the economy and stimulate the economy. So as many responsible business people, business companies as we can find, and that's the key word, responsible, not some fly-by-night operation, but legitimate companies, if it can stimulate the economy, I'm for it.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Oh, I didn't put a light on, but you're going to make me talk. I, the 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(19)'s are good, and you actually start getting my attention a little bit, and I start thinking about the chambers, and, you know, they're, I don't know why they did the 501(c)(6)'s. They probably should have just been some other type of entity, like a corporation. I don't know. It makes sense to me for the businesses that they do and what they serve. I guess they did that for tax purposes. But on that note, I got kicking through it, and, you know, they serve a great, they just do good helping businesses get together and to continue moving forward, and I think the economy is so important in what's coming up. So I'm going to support that, but I would like, just from what Commissioner Tobias said, number one, I make a commitment, I won't take any money from the Business Voice in this campaign. And I also would like to maybe stipulate in this, the chambers don't maybe throw any support money there until after elections either, until we get through this, so that makes it a little bit more clean of a process. You know, there's nothing that's going to affect this election, as far as chambers getting money. So maybe do this at the chambers, to get this, just make a commitment, they won't write any checks to Business Voice till after the election cycle, and you guys do whatever you need to do. But I think I'm going to support the chambers in this, because I just think they do a good job. And I don't know why they're a 501(c)(6), but it's what they are, so I'm going to support that.
I'm going to step back to my prior proposal, and I kind of have been honing it a little bit here, to make it a little more understandable and to make it make sense. Because then the individual commissioners could decide to throw some money toward the chambers in their districts, if that's what they choose to do. And if they don't want to, they don't have to. If they want to put it in another district, they can do that, too. So I would suggest you consider allocating up to $100,000 per commission district, or I should say, per commission office, because it really doesn't have to be spent within the district if they don't want it to, to be allocated to nonprofits or not-for-profit businesses which comply with CARES Act federal funding requirements that are, for any reason, not compliant with one or more county requirements over and above the federal requirements. So they'd have to comply with that. Yes, ma'am?
I would feel a little funny doing that in election season myself, so I don't think with good conscience I can do that, because it could look like I'm trying to buy vote. So with all cautiousness, I can't support that in election season for me. If I wasn't running, I might, but...
Well, give me your 100. I'll parcel it out fairly.
So you want all 500 here to go ahead?
Actually, I don't want that, because the calls would be incredible.
But that's why I don't feel like I can support that.
Well, let's see where other folks are at with it, because then alternatively, as for Commissioner Tobias, if you don't want to allocate the 100, you could return it to the feds, you could send it back to the Treasury for that 100. So you would have the absolute ability to make sure that at least 100 grand isn't spent that you don't want to have spent. Something to think of.
Less than 1% of the 105 million, is that what you're referring to?
Less, the 105 million is less than 1% of the overall pot, too, so, yeah. Still $100,000, a lot of money.
So less than 1%, I'm with you, still, yeah, during an election season. And I understand you're not up for elections, so I don't think you're doing this with any type of electoral, you know...
Not hardly.
Intentions whatsoever. And since you self-funded, clearly, you know, that's not the case. But it's not a position that I'd like to be in, and not a position I'd like to put staff in. And if we're going to go down that road, you know, we might as well divide the amount of money that we spend on roads and hand it to us to pick which roads we want to pave or reconstruct, instead of looking, you know, have a professional staff to make those decisions or, sorry, make those recommendations for us countywide. So I'm really not comfortable with it.
I figured I'd just throw it out there, as an alternative. Okay. Yeah, the one I was thinking of, quite frankly, it's not, I mean, it's not really underhanded, because it doesn't benefit me personally, but the Humane Society has, you knew it, didn't you? You knew it, you knew it. No, I thought that they were as well, but the requirement that we had with the cap of 50 full-time equivalent employees, that cuts them out.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Please.
I'm okay with making it an exception to the Humane Society.
I like that, good.
That they don't necessarily need to meet that threshold, if that helps you get there.
It does.
Because there's a great, and they'd be offered an equal amount of everyone else. They wouldn't get $100,000 check, but if everyone got a $7,000 check, and I have no idea what it'll be, they would be granted that equal amount.
Yeah, could I, oh, actually, let's hear from Commissioner Nardi. Commissioner Nardi?
I think I'm going to sit over there somewhere next time. Do you think, I mean, are we just going to pick the Humane Society, or is it all animal rescues? Because we have a lot of really good organizations in the county, and I think you opened that door.
The problem is, most of the other ones, quite frankly, don't have 50 full-time employees. That's why them, so like Coastal Poodle Rescue, for instance, I don't know if they have any qualifying expenses, but there's no way they have 50 full-time equivalents. Yeah, I think the vast majority of them are already in the mix. SPCA, I don't know about them, and frankly, I don't know their people to the same extent as I do with Humane Society.
But let's just not exclude them. Let's just... Or you could just say animal rescue with more than 50 employ, I mean, it's obvious.
Yeah, I'm fine, if you want to say animal rescue with more than 50 employees. Okay, so I would ask for a motion in that case to allow, to apply within the group of $10 million that we've allocated at the prior meeting, any animal rescue organization that otherwise complies. We're simply relieving them of the obligation to be capped at 50 employees. All right, motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll second it. Any discussion? And I see Commissioner Smith has a light before we vote.
Well, not in this particular item. I just don't feel comfortable being a commissioner in charge of $100,000 to give out to anybody or any entity. I would rather staff, they're totally disassociated, they don't have to worry about being accused of playing favorites. I just don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, part of it, I was thinking with the chambers, that's a way to get the (c)(3)'s and the (c)(19)'s included, but also ensure the chambers have the ability to get funded, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't come out of the same pot. It would be coming out of a restricted, smaller pot. It's an idea. You know, I'm not going to push forward with that at this point. Yeah, I wasn't thinking about the political side of it with the elections. That certainly does, that does play a part, I suppose. But any further discussion on the motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
Just a clarification. Does this limit it to (c)(3)'s and (c)(19)'s, or is this separate of that motion?
Well, before we, we didn't even get into that yet, so my thought is, what we'll do is, we'll, after we address this...
Okay, got it, fine.
We'll have a separate motion, in all likelihood, dealing with whether to restrict to (c)(3)'s, (c)(19)'s, (c)(6)'s.
I understand.
Fair enough. So this is just to relieve animal rescue nonprofits or not-for-profits from the obligation that they not have, that they not exceed that cap of 50 employees? That's the only thing contemplated by the motion. All right, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. All right, now we can get on to the (c)(3), (c)(19), (c)(6) debate. Commissioner Pritchett?
I'd like to make a motion to go with the recommendations to include 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(19)'s, 501(c)(6) with the stipulation that the chambers would, until after November elections, not write any checks out to the Business Voice.
So starting instantaneously, from now through that...
Yes.
In order to qualify?
Yes.
Right. I'll go ahead and second that. Commissioner Nardi?
And normally, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but that's a very specific requirement, and I, Ms. Bentley?
Do you have another idea of how to phrase it?
No, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Is that like, because it's sort of picking on one organization? I mean, that could be perceived, is that? And I'm not saying that I even agree with the motion necessarily, but, you know, if you want to include those organizations, we're saying essentially you can't, like, do business, like, we're dictating how they do business. I think that that puts us in a bad place.
Well, it's federal money, and they can take it, they can accept it or reject it. I think you have more leeway in this situation than in many others.
Right.
I think my only concern with that is what Commissioner Tobias brought up, because the Business Voice does typically support us, because we're pro-business, and I don't want anything looking like we're giving to the chambers, ergo, we're getting the support that way. So that's just, I was just trying to figure out how to get us out of the equation for us.
And us personally, we could just make a commitment not to accept money from them.
I'll be fine with that, too. I make that commitment.
I would have no problem doing that. Are you good with that?
The problem still exists, that they would, in all likelihood, support folks in municipal races, and it simply would shift the money from here to elsewhere, so I don't think it resolves it.
But it's us deciding right now. The municipalities don't have...
Or state races.
Well, let me just throw this out. If we give money to XYZ business, or XYZ organization, or XYZ animal rescue, and they turn around and give $100 to somebody, I mean, you can't restrict anybody from doing that. It's a constitutional right.
It's exactly what...
It's not a constitutional right.
That's what Commissioner Nardi said.
Donations? No, it's not a constitutional right to have the money that they're not entitled to, free and clear, without any obligations or restrictions.
Well, I want to change my motion to remove my restriction, because Commissioner Nardi's the same place I am, as far as not receiving funds, so I feel plain.
Mr. Chair, is this a restriction or a condition?
It's a condition, as I see it. I see Ms. Bentley's nodding.
Yeah, I was leading there. So this is the same condition, and this is, I mean, we're going to lose two. Same condition with mask, right? You're not, no one's entitled to the money, you make the decision whether or not you go for it or not, that's what you contemplate, and thus, there would be no constitutional issues, one way or another.
None whatsoever, and I'm comfortable saying that. And I will say, Commissioner Tobias, if you decide to get me a Voting Buddy shirt, make sure it's under the reporting limits, because I don't want to have to fill out a form like I do. All right, so there's a motion, I believe, that we have a second?
I did change it to remove the stipulation.
And does the second stand?
I thought it was yours.
It was my second. My second doesn't stand.
It doesn't stand?
It does not stand. Do we have another second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Smith seconds it.
Sorry, can we repeat the motion now?
Oh, my lord. Can we go home?
I make a motion to move forward with the 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(19)'s, and 501(c)(6).
And Commissioner Smith seconds that, and I see a light. Commissioner Nardi?
Yes, and I almost regret hitting it, because that means we're going to talk about this even longer. And the only reason why I say that is because I think we all have good intentions, and we're just so paranoid about being painted with this broad brush. And honestly, what if a business applies for a business grant, and they happen to have been somebody that wrote us a check even in last election? That's what my big fear is. I keep thinking this money's available. But yet, at the same time, I feel like excluding businesses, or chambers, or whoever, or 501(c)(6)'s or 19, I think what, we actually sort of discriminate against them. So I'm trying to be fair and equitable, and if anybody up here can be bought for $100 or $500 or even $1,000 check, then shame on you. And I don't think that's any of us up here. So with that, you know, I'm going to support it. I know there's a motion, a second, and I'm going to call the question, because if I discuss this any longer, I'm going to...
Technically, calling the question is a debatable motion, just to be clear.
It is, in fact.
So, it's not a nuclear weapon, as you assume.
All right, it's, I'm gonna call it anyway, unless someone makes a motion.
Out of respect for staff's time, that's been sitting here for four hours, and we've gotten--
All right, let's go for it. So, all in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, passes 3-2 with myself and Commissioner Tobias in the negative. It's odd, it's really disturbing that we're voting together on a couple of these things here. All right, anything further, Mr. Bate?
Afraid to say yes.
(laughing)
But this, I hope will be an easy one. When the board approved the program, the CARES programs, on May 5th, you had indicated a variety, you know, municipalities being included. One entity that we did not include was the school board. I have had some recent discussions with--
May I interject, sir?
Excuse me?
May I interject?
Go ahead.
All right, I apologize, but I think this will be to everyone's benefit. Could I have a motion to allow the school board to fall within any of the existing reimbursement categories that we've outlined? Is that sufficient, sir?
Yes.
All right, motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, what else you got?
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay. All right, Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Ooh. Commissioner Pritchett?
I got a real small one. When we did the PPE for small businesses, I went through the list, and I was gonna ask the commission, because they gave us a list of something they used as standard. We did restaurants. I was gonna ask if we could also do small retail stores in that mix also, for PPE supplies.
I'm good with it.
Sure.
But how do we define a small retail store? That's my only concern. If you want to work it out with staff--
Under 25 people.
25 or less.
Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion to do that.
All right, I'll go ahead and second your motion. Any discussion on the motion? Do we need anything further, Ms. Bentley, as far as you're aware?
Be fine.
All right, that'll work. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, passes unanimously. Okay, that's it. All right, I've got one, and pardon me, because I'm looking at a computer over here. I had to move some things around. I had sent out a memo earlier, which is included in the minutes for today's meeting, regarding administrative order 05. There are a couple different proposals that I had. One of them, I think, is entirely non-controversial, where I asked to amend or update any references to eFAX, to BECA-Brevard Electronic Court application. EFAX is obsolete at this point, has been replaced by BECA. It's not being supported, as I understand it, any longer by the court, pardon me, by the clerk system. The other deals with AO05 insofar as it deals with recreation partner volunteers. It's not a request to change it, insofar as it applies to employees or any other type of volunteer, but specifically recreation park, recreation partner volunteers. As defined in that memo, I've said it's a volunteer serving with a group or organization which has a current recreation partner agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, providing for non-exclusive use of a facility in order for the group or organization to provide recreation programs. So, it's a real narrow group. I was asking to have an exception crafted to allow for folks that fall under that recreation partner volunteer definition, that have convictions for nonviolent misdemeanors and/or nonviolent felonies of the third degree, where their conviction dates are at least 2,500 days in the past. That's 6.8-something years, I believe. They would have to have all terms of sentence, excluding financial obligations, completed. So, we wouldn't hold them up if they owe court costs. We wouldn't prevent them from volunteering, but if everything else is complete, anything non-financial, they would be eligible. Convictions for first and second degree felonies would be automatically disqualifying as to this policy. To qualify for an exception under this with either a misdemeanor or a third degree felony, all of which would have to be nonviolent, the recreation partner volunteer applicant would need to produce a letter, either from the chief law enforcement officer of the municipality in which he or she resides, or from BCSO, namely from Sheriff Wayne Ivy, or whoever happens to be the sheriff in the future. Can't be delegated to another law enforcement officer. The letter has to be dated within 60 days preceding the application for recreation partner volunteer status. I've included some proposed language in the memo that was circulated that's included in the minutes, basically saying that the chief law enforcement officer is familiar with the applicant, that they don't believe they pose any elevated risk of recidivism, and they believe the applicant could be law-abiding. That's nuts and bolts, what it is. And basically asked us to consider an exception for them to volunteer as a recreation partner volunteer with Brevard County. It has to be on their letterhead, has to bear their signature, whether physical or electronic. Alternatively, if they can't get that from the chief law enforcement officer, they would be able to substitute for that a letter from a circuit judge from the 18th Judicial Circuit, so one from here or Seminole, that says essentially the same thing. Wouldn't be eligible to originate from a county court judge sitting in the circuit, so it would have to be a legit, no-holds-barred circuit judge. Under no circumstances would the aforementioned proposal serve to permit those with convictions involving any way drug-related, including alcohol-related felonies, to operate vehicles and/or heavy equipment belonging to the county, and under no circumstances shall the aforementioned proposed exception serve to permit those with convictions involving in any way, whether misdemeanor or felony, child abuse, neglect, or endangerment, to volunteer in any capacity which may be, or, I'm sorry, which may require or involve direct and/or indirect supervision of juveniles. They still have to meet all other criteria for recreation partner volunteer status, and essentially, that's what I'm asking that we consider changing. So, the one modification, which I think is totally non-controversial, updating eFAX to BECA-Brevard Electronic Court application, and then the other that allows for folks with certain nonviolent convictions to volunteer is Brevard County Recreation Partner Volunteers. So, Commissioner Pritchett?
Your first one's easy.
All right.
Sounds like a housekeeping item.
I'll second that motion.
For the first one?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, okay, motion.
All right, so to change to update the eFAX to BECA, all right, let's just, we'll do that as its own. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so AO05 will be updated to say BECA instead of eFAX.
And as far as the second one, if we have to vote on it today, I'm gonna vote no, because I have a lot of items that are giving me a little bit of heartburn on it. I, we're heavy into youth sports and up in our area.
Right.
And so, I got thinking, well, what if they let them do it with the men's and women's? Like, maybe they can be rec partners with men's and women. Then, I don't know how to get an age criteria on there, because some, sometimes when they get older, you still have a vulnerable population again. So--
I'm trying to follow, I apologize.
That's okay. Erin does not say it good.
No, I'm just, maybe it's because we've had so many hours in the meeting. I'm just not following what the concern is.
We have children's sports, and I have, Commissioner Tobias brought this up, people do plead down on things. And in my lifetime, I know a few people that might have ended up with just the charges of drugs or something, but there was something else that was underlying that just didn't come up. So, you know, this has been working, as far as protecting the vulnerable population. So, as of right now, I don't want to change it, but if you gave me a little bit of time, might be something else I could think through. But right now, I have great, and I know you would never do that either, I just have great caution right now, making a change on something that seems to be working. So--
Commissioner Zardini?
I have a question. Is this a problem? Do we have volunteers--
Well, I'll give you an example.
--that request to come to recreation, or want to volunteer for recreational things that have convictions?
We had a fellow, and I know it comes up from time to time--
I mean, are we changing the rules because of one guy? Because that's--
Well, it's the first one that's been brought to my attention, and then after that--
Because that's the first time I've heard of, and the reason, and I'll let you answer in a second, but I mean, that's the reason why I'm asking. We're creating a big bureaucracy, big set of rules, and a big change in our way of doing things that have worked, based on one incident that maybe is unfortunate, but has managed to keep the population safe. So, I'm not comfortable with this right now, as it sits, especially if it's, you're gonna tell me it's one or two people.
Sure, here's what I'll tell you. It was first brought to my attention not too long ago, this past week. We had a call from Michael Blake and Coco, and also, there's a BCSO commander, I can't recall which one offhand, who's essentially vouching for this individual who wants to serve as a rec partner volunteer. So, it's someone who had a lot of drug issues in their past. They haven't had any convictions for anything in many years. This is kind of like one of those folks that turns their life around and wants now to contribute to society. This isn't someone who has any violence in their history, ever. Doesn't have anything to do with abusing children, neglecting them, endangering them, anything of that sort, and they want to volunteer with the Pop Warner League. Our outside agency that screens them said that he was approved, as far as their screening process was concerned. In fact, the school board approved him to volunteer with the school board, but past our outside agency, which does the checks, it was discovered that he had certain convictions that may run afoul of AO05, because they require a Level 1 clearance, which is a high-level security check, which has inordinately more difficult requirements to get through than some of the others. But this is someone who, at least according to a BCSO commander, as well as Michael Blake and Coco, really doesn't pose any risk to anyone. And when I looked at that, I've heard that we've had other folks that have been denied in the past for lesser convictions, and that's kind of concerning to me, that we have folks, you know, let's say someone had a theft 20 years ago, or they had a possession of cannabis 10 years ago. Are they really a danger to coach kids pop Warner? I don't think so. And I don't want to put someone that's gonna pose a risk to children, but if the chief law enforcement officer is willing to vouch for them, and they otherwise pass everything, I mean, that's a pretty high bar to meet to begin with. That's why I'm not saying just let them do it, period. It's specifically for this type of volunteer, not even volunteers as a whole, and they would have that overwhelmingly difficult step to get a letter from either a circuit judge or the chief law enforcement officer. So, there is certainly a safeguard there.
And I feel, I really feel for that guy, but at the same time, I've been here almost four years now, and I've never had one person contact my office saying they couldn't be a recreational volunteer, and they wanted us to change the rules. And I just, I hesitate to do that based on one. And again, if it's a marijuana charge, was it an assault and a marijuana charge first?
No, that's why I said nothing violent.
And I'm not talking about him, and I feel really bad for him, because he's probably a really fine individual. But again, I'm not comfortable changing our entire rules, because there's one guy that's just a really stellar citizen.
Well, he's, you know, he's the one guy that happened to bring it to my attention, but in finding out that there have been people that have been disqualified for less, that to me is concerning as well. If it were just the one guy, I don't know that I would approach it this way, but my thought is, if there have been others that have been shot down for things that, you know, don't involve violence, that don't involve anything with kids--
And I get it, but then staff should have brought it to any one of our attentions before. It's never been brought to my attention.
It is now.
So, I'm just saying. I know it is, but again, I'm not comfortable changing all the rules. I mean, just not.
Well, I'm not in a rush to get this done. I know that there is a deadline for Pop Warner training, so if we don't approve it today, he's not, in all likelihood, gonna be able to do it this year. But if it's something we can implement by next year, if that's what people are more comfortable with, I would certainly, you know, I would certainly encourage you to look at it. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. Are you willing, are you, I'm not gonna public record your request, but are you at liberty to share the individual's name that you're referring to?
It was Livingston, I believe. Is that right, Ms. Donner? Livingston. And I mean, he's got an extensive background, but nothing that would--
Birthday, I imagine there--
Can I search?
Yeah. But there are a couple, there are a couple issues here. First of all, is amending, and this is a technical issue, one that I think that we can move forward and around. I don't know that we really want to be amending administrative orders. I think that that probably comes under the purview of the county manager. What we could potentially do is do a board policy, and let the board policy change the administrative order, instead of, you know, stepping on our county manager's toes.
Yeah, that works.
Do you have a year? Was it 64?
Ms. Donner, I think it was, what was it, basically drugs and theft stuff from years back? Wasn't that what it was?
No, I'm just looking for data, date of birth, 64. Is it a Ralph?
Ralph, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, he's got a bunch of stuff, but it's all old.
Well, I mean, we're looking at felony theft, failure to appear, violation of probation, contempt of court, obstruction by a disguised person. I didn't even know what that meant. I don't know what that means. Burglary, trafficking in stolen property. Some of these fall outside of your six years, but are within the last 10 years. I can't support it for a number of reasons, but I wanted to give you some of those, so if you want to work around it, I just want to, you know, outside of-- First of all, you said excluding court costs.
Right.
The voters of Florida, when they voted for the amendment about felons voting, they were pretty darn clear that all conditions of the sentence must be met in order to get the vote, get the ability to vote again. The liberal, some liberal judges have disagreed. Thankfully, the Supreme Court has upheld the will of the people, and those felons cannot vote. So, if they cannot vote, I don't think that they should, not upheld, but they have decided not to hear it. You know the legal term better than I tell, thankfully, after, at least Florida's August election.
PC8, Ms. Bentley?
So, I would hope that they pay, they pay their court costs. On top of that, you mentioned that child abuse and child neglect is being crimes that would not be eligible under this policy.
Right.
Are you referring specifically to the Florida statute 827, which is like abuse, aggravated abuse and neglect of a child? Is that correct?
I left it real broad, and I think I phrased in there "in any way related to." So, it would certainly contemplate that, and anything else where there's a causal connection.
Okay, so, and I hate to bring this up, but this covered under a different chapter, 847, is the stuff we just talked about.
Yeah.
You know, transmission of obscene materials to a minor, which is a third degree felony. That would, now, Mr. Livingston, looking at his, is not there, but that would fall underneath the criteria, most likely, that you would, if it was more than six years in their past, allow them to participate--
No, 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 no. It's--
Why? It's not covered under, that's a different chapter of law.
If they ever had anything involving in any way, whether misdemeanor, felony, child abuse, neglect, or endangerment, that would be automatically prohibiting, regardless of when it occurred. Same thing with violence.
Yeah, I get you, but, yeah, I'm with you, but abuse, aggravated abuse, and neglect of a child is described in 827. The transmission of obscene material by a minor is a completely different section of law. That's 847. So, those are two different--
Yeah, different chapters.
Different chapters.
Sure.
Just to be, you know, would 847 also be covered?
Yeah, like I said, whether it's under one particular chapter or another, if it in any way relates to child abuse, neglect, or endangerment, it would be disqualifying. So, I would contemplate that as being disqualifying as well, that's correct.
Okay, because statute differentiates those two, just to be very clear.
Well, they're just in different chapters. It doesn't say one is or isn't--
Okay, and finally--
--in the fault category.
And you're, does Mr. Livingston have any other methods in which, other than the rubric you set up, does he have any other redress to be able to coach Pop Warner at this time?
Not here, I don't believe so. And again, this is kind of an outlier for me.
My question here is, I know it's a long shot, but we're only talking about one person. Article 4, Section 8 of the Florida Constitution gives the governor the ability to pardon state crimes. So, does Mr. Livingston have the ability to have all of his crimes pardoned at this juncture?
That's beyond my level of knowledge. I don't have enough knowledge to answer one way or the other.
I would argue that he, or anyone, should they want to do it, go, you know, instead of waste the time of judges that you probably know, or backlog--
Sure.
--our sheriff, you know, that is putting out fires on a daily basis, and to try to get their crimes--
I understand where you're coming from, but again, you know, I keep hearing for one person for one person. I just want to stress, I'm not suggesting this solely for this gentleman's benefit. Prior to this, I had no idea that he even existed. So, I don't, you know, I don't have anything for or against this individual, other than what I've heard. I was impressed by the fact that a BCSO commander is willing to vouch for him. I was impressed by the fact that we have decent, upstanding people in the community willing to vouch for him. It's an outlier to me as well, in the sense that Brevard Public Schools has approved him to volunteer there, where he certainly can be around kids, but we have a concern here that is disqualifying to him, even though our own outside agency that does the background investigation said he's good to go. So, and I say it's not for him specifically, because he was the first one that caused this to be brought to my mind, to my attention, and in speaking with staff, finding out that people have been disqualified for less, it's kind of unfortunate that we're disqualifying people for less. If there's a theft conviction in the background, if we're worried he's gonna run off with a softball or a baseball, I mean, that's a pretty small worry in the scheme of things.
Well, felony theft, I think in state of Florida is at least $300. So, it's a really expensive baseball.
But there's nothing to steal in a Pop Warner game. I mean, that's my point. And you're talking from so many years ago. There doesn't seem to be any sort of causal connection between what he did long, long ago, and the capacity in which he's seeking to volunteer.
One more question.
Sure.
Sure, and I don't know this, you can answer, or Ms. Bentley can answer. Can you help me with liability perspective? If we were to change policy, grant someone the opportunity, and God forbid, something bad happened, is there any liability, whether it would be on the county, or not the individual law enforcement officer, but maybe the insurance policy on the agency that ultimately is paid through tax dollars, would an attorney have an ability to--
They can always try. Our parks rec agreements do address that. They have an indemnification clause covering any claims arising from the volunteers or the rec partners' activities.
But just to be clear, if it was challenged, we still would have to--
Well, if we got sued--
--their staff time and--
We would have to defend it. I think it would be on the rec partners in the end, but certainly, anyone can join us in a lawsuit. We should have coverage with insurance, though.
So, the question would be, if the sheriff signed up on it as a chief law enforcement officer, that, you know, ABC was a good guy, or a good person, and then ABC turned out to do something horrific, obviously, the sheriff as an individual probably would be safe, but would his insurance--
Ms. Bentley, is it fair to say that anyone can sue anyone for anything they want?
Well, that's true. I don't know of a case on point that would address that issue, but it's certainly a possibility.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
God bless this little fella, getting picked out today on this. But since you said felony theft, you know, when we do this, we're also opening up rec partners that do work with elderly, vulnerable population, and that could be a real problem with somebody that's a rec partner that's working with some retirement people, because it's really easy to steal from them. Not that he would. Again, God bless him on this. But I think when you have somebody that's been convicted of something, they're a higher-risk population, because you know that somebody's already crossed the line at one time, whether they're better or not, and not that he might not deserve a second chance somewhere. I don't know him, so this makes it so easy, but it's like we were talking about earlier. Sometimes